Mission meeting for October thirteenth, two thousand fourteen is called to order. And first item on our agenda is approval of minutes from the May twelfth Planning Commission's meeting.
Of approval.
Second.
All right. Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayden?
Aye.
Mr. Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Motion's passed.
Are there any public comments for items that are not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we will move then to the public hearing portion of the meeting. We have PC fourteen dash one seventeen, CU thirteen dash zero three, conditional use, and SP thirteen dash twenty-two, site plan and design review for a wireless communication pole on the McLaughlin Elementary School property located at one nine two three zero South End Road. I will read a quasi judicial hearing script related to this hearing item. A staff report has been prepared for this item and has been made available to the public seven days before the public hearing.
And actually it hasn't, so.
In theory.
We had the old one.
The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to this applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are as shown on the chart on the wall. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out your address on the card so the city will notify you of its final decision. For the record, please begin all testimony stating your name. Testimony and evidence will be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the consideration of the city commission or Luba or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed condition of approval without sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. And we will now open the record this evening for the files that I've read. Does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare? And has any commissioner visited the site since the last hearing on this matter?
I have had three, whoops.
I have had three contacts over the last week and Fred Meyer by people walking up to me while I was shopping to give me their opinion regarding this matter. I have just politely thanked them and informed them that the item was going to be continued.
None.
I have not been back to the site, but I do have a five-year-old who's pre-K and we're just, this is one of the schools we're considering for next year.
None, but I do have a question for Jennifer. Definition of bias, is that a predetermined position on this or just exactly what does that legally mean? I know what ex parte contact means, but what's bias mean in this regard?
If you have a reason that you want to disclose that you think your judgment is clouded or compromised to hear this matter, then you should disclose it and recuse yourself. I can't answer in the abstract, but, or maybe, do you have more of a question?
Well, I know, it sounds to me like conflict of interest, but, you know, if I've already made up my mind, is that a bias based on the findings or the submittal of the application and evidence, testimony?
Well, you haven't heard all the evidence or testimony, and my understanding is that the applicants are looking at their various options for bringing this forward, so if you've already made up your mind and you're not open to hearing information about the criteria, then you probably are biased and shouldn't be involved in the decision-making. But if you're available to listen to the materials that are presented against the criteria in the city's code and make an informed decision based on that information, then you can continue to hear the matter and make a decision.
Well, I happen, we all kind of read and know what we know already, but we still look open to listening to everything. Isn't that kind of what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, Chair Kidwell, I also will reiterate for the record again that I am an AT&amp;T wireless customer, but I do not feel I'm biased in any way because I don't live in that area and it doesn't really affect me other than as my rule as a planning commissioner, but I am an AT&amp;T wireless customer.
And I have nothing to declare. I have not been to the site since the last meeting and I've had no contacts and I have no predisposition regarding this matter.
Don't go to Fred Meyer.
Nobody ever talks to me there.
I thought I was being pretty stealthy by going like in the morning. I think that's when everybody goes, so now I'm going to switch and go to a different time.
Does anyone have any questions for the commissioners for the declarations that have been made? Seeing none, we will continue.
I think somebody else on the commission is.
Thank you, Chair Kidwell. Evening commissioners. Before you on the dais were placed five emails that we'd like to enter into the record, one from a Mr. Weiss, one from a Mr. Last, one from a Mrs. Last, and three from Mr. Gallagher. So you have those at the dais, we'll make sure they're in the packet for the next hearing. The applicant has requested a continuance of the hearing until the date certain of November tenth, two thousand fourteen. Stack recommends that the Planning Commission take testimony from anybody, any citizens who wish to participate and provide public testimony and then continue the hearing with the record open to the date certain of Monday, November tenth, two thousand fourteen.
Okay, so.
Do we need to make a motion or?
At this time, we're just going to take public testimony?
And so, as the Commissioner, Chair Kidwell mentioned, if you do would like to speak, just please fill out a form and you can give it to Ms. Turway over here. We'll call you up in the order we're received. And three minutes for individuals, five minutes for a recognized neighborhood association. And with that, I believe we have some folks signed up.
The first person signed up to speak is Tom O'Brien.
Good evening and thank you, Chair Kidwell and members of the Planning. I have.
Excuse me, Tom, I'm just curious.
I'm sorry.
Are you representing your neighborhood or?
Tonight, I'm representing the neighborhood, yes.
Okay, great.
I have never seen anything in the years that I've been active in my neighborhood association that have been generating this much involvement on the part of the citizens of our neighborhood. I think they were offended by the fact that initially the school district did not share with them what was going on and that they had made an application. When we eventually learned of it, we invited the Director of Operations from the district to attend a meeting in January of last year, excuse me, January twenty-fourteen. At that time, no contract had yet been signed. We gave Mr. Thonstad an opportunity to say whatever he would like to say and speak about it and tell us the plans, go into details. He went into some, a number of questions were asked of him. We had invited the school principal and staff as well as the PTSO members. A couple of the officers of PTSO showed up and voiced their opposition to it. After everything was said and done and all the discussions were over, we took a vote on how many people wanted the tower at the school and how many did not. There were four people who wanted it, there were twenty-five people against it, and five abstentions. Myself and Doug Neely were two of those five, I don't recall who the other three were. One of the individuals who had voted for it was an AT&amp;T customer who later upon thinking on it changed his opinion and has testified to that degree that he just doesn't think it's the proper place to put at the children's school. These are elementary school children, there are safety issues involved. You have in your packet since the last meeting received a letter from a Patty Jarrett who in her letter describes the fact that on the thirty-first of July of this year, she had contacted the key person, Todd Feiberg, Site Acquisition Manager with AT&amp;T. And the reason she contacted him, I learned after she had done all of this, was that she was concerned about the children and their safety. And she thought, you know, my place is close enough that it would well serve the purpose to put a tower there instead of on the school property. They didn't get back to her for a couple of weeks, so she followed up with an email, at which point they came back and they said, in essence, they had too much money invested in the engineering and the other processes that they've gone through at McLaughlin, and they weren't about to change their mind unless it was denied by the city, in which case they'd be happy to talk to her. I found that rather interesting because shortly after she had that contact with them, they came here to your meeting and they said nothing of another opportunity to place the tower elsewhere. They did not seem to be at all interested in moving away from their predetermination. That having been said, I did sit down with Larry Didway and I know that one of the things that the school district would like to see, they have as a carrier subscribed or taken a contract out with AT&amp;T to provide service for the district. All district employees, for the most part, who are issued cell phones, have them through AT&amp;T. The coverage we all recognize is absolutely miserable in our neighborhood. We'd like to see AT&amp;T improve it. You have received from AT&amp;T a complaint map that was in your packet early on, and I'm trying to pull it up here. It has little purple dots showing where coverage is poor. I've taken, and the purple triangle or blue triangle here is where they currently have a tower. And if this is any portrayal of the complaints, they have seven complaints immediately in the vicinity of that tower. So by putting a tower at the school grounds, we still may not achieve the results that the school district's hoping for, and that is cell coverage in their immediate location. Because as AT&amp;T said here at your meeting, the antennas project out, not down. Therefore, does the tower make sense at that location? You had asked at the last meeting, what is it made of? They could not tell you, however, when we had the two individuals from Lexcom to our July meeting, they told us it would be made of fiberglass. Now, I don't know how many of you have ever owned a boat or RV and know what the maintenance requirements would be on fiberglass, but I can assure you, unless there's something in the contract that requires maintenance on a regular basis, if that tower can be up there for twenty-five years, I just don't see it. The deterioration alone would have pieces of that branches falling off. Those branches, according to what they've submitted, each weigh five hundred pounds. The total tower construction weight is ten thousand pounds. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, they said the branches would be fiberglass, the tower they didn't say was fiberglass.
The tower's steel.
Right.
Five hundred pound pieces of steel, but they're camouflaged with the fiberglass overlays.
Right, I just wanted to be clear that it wasn't that they said the tower was fiberglass.
Well, the other thing I forgot to mention was that at the school board meeting where the school board discussed whether or not to withdraw the contract, three of the members of the school board felt that it was best to pull the contract. Three did not think that it was best to pull the contract. Basically, they had a concern over whether AT&amp;T would come back at them and ask them for some remuneration for the costs already involved. Because it was a tie vote and the vote was whether or not to withdraw it, it did not pass. But there was enough concern on the part of the school board members that I seriously think that they would like you to make a decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the can is kicked in front of us.
The next person signed up to speak is Jim Pates.
My name is Jim Pates. I live on Hazel Grove Drive in Oregon City, Oregon. I will be within a good hard balls throw of that tower if it goes in. I am also an AT&amp;T customer and experience extremely bad service continually and daily. I have spoke to you people before in my opposition to the location of this tower. New things have come to my mind just in listening to Tom tonight and reading some of the things going on. This has not been a transparent operation. People have been doing things, we haven't been involved, we haven't been asked for our opinion, maybe legally they don't have to, but when you live here, I think you really should have a voice in it. We weren't given that voice, as I understand it. I just see so much going on, and now we have an alternative site that apparently is quite close to the site but would not involve any kids. And as I spoke to you before, my primary concern is the children. I'm a grandfather, hope to be a great-grandfather someday, but a grandfather right now, and there's nothing more important in the world to me than children. And to put this thing right on top of a whole school full of them, I think is ridiculous. I think that you have an opportunity now because we have another site, and as Tom indicated, they won't even look at it unless this site is down. So I really suggest and ask you all, let's give them an opportunity to look at that new site and turn down this current site location. I don't believe it's in the best interest of the people who live in the area. I definitely don't believe it's in the best interest of the kids that go to school. Please vote no on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to speak is Peggy Falkenstein.
Peggy Falkenstein, Oregon City, and I have a master's degree in public administration. While we sit here, let me take you on a visit to McLaughlin School. In the morning, as children arrive, maybe you'll see the young fathers, mothers, and grandparents walking the path or driving to drop off their children for the school day. You may see the look of determination as young children discover their independence as they ride their small bicycles across the school lawn. You may delight at the sight of the young father who gives his kindergartner a ride around the path on a tandem bike each morning, at school morning, as he delivers him to the school door. You may hear chickadees chirping, a song sparrow singing, or see a flash of indigo blue with hints of rose red as western bluebirds fly to perch in the four-hundred-year-old oak trees and the sixty-year-old cherry tree. In the afternoon, the fragrance of the freshly mown lawn lingers as you hear the children spilling onto the school grounds as they run, laugh, and play. Later, boys and girls arrive with coaches and parents for soccer practice and neighborhood kids toss footballs and frisbees on many areas of the lawn. Joggers pass by, people of all ages walk leashed dogs and stop to talk to neighbors. One young adolescent practices his golf swing with plastic balls. An elderly man of about eighty slowly rides his bicycle around the path. These are all things I see, all of these things I saw this past week. I urge you to ask yourselves, why would we compromise any space that offers this kind of community livability? Should AT&amp;T cell tower maintenance trucks be an ongoing part of this scene? Should we allow a cell tower to compromise a soccer field, a lacrosse field, a softball field? Cell towers hum and buzz as they're automatically heated and cooled. A two thousand thirteen study in Tucson, Arizona, found that cell tower noise is comparable to the decibel level of loud barking dogs, large transformers, and a car going fifty miles per hour. Should we allow this noise pollution to drown out the sounds of birds and children at play? AT&amp;T will ask, what will a cell tower, tower, excuse me, what will a cell tower hurt on the school grounds? Maybe the correct question is, how can it help? Does a cell tower at McLaughlin add value to community use and livability? The answer is no. It's a value add for AT&amp;T, not for the community. I believe as commissioners, you spend a lot of time making decisions that improve the quality of our community. AT&amp;T has hired only the best to convince you that a cell tower will improve the quality of our community. Maybe these intelligence strategists should be given an initiative to find a site on a private property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The next person to speak is Dennis Gallagher.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name's Dennis Gallagher, I'm a resident on Salmonberry Drive in Oregon City, and I'm also the serial email writer. The agreement between Oregon City School District and AT&amp;T Wireless was negotiated and signed by representatives of the school without ever formally being discussed before the school board. The parents of the roughly five hundred and fifty students attending John McLaughlin were never officially informed or asked for input prior to this agreement. I have to seriously question why only one or two individuals representing the school district would have the authority to enter an agreement involving such a controversial issue. This agreement should have never been signed or reached the Planning Commission level without first involving the larger community. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the only notification required from you, the Planning Commission, is to those residents who unfortunately, like myself, live within three hundred feet of the proposed structure. My guess is that the number of homes that lie within that three hundred-foot parameter are no more than perhaps eight to ten and probably less. Certainly, the placement of a tower at McLaughlin would affect more than those very few households. Even though the agreement was reached in March, I did not receive my required notification until June, about one week after school let out for the summer. By this time, of course, parents and students were planning or already on summer vacations and not focusing on school issues. Now, you wouldn't know what to look at me, but I walk one to two miles every morning at the McLaughlin track. Many area residents, most of whom live far more than three hundred feet from the site, use the school grounds for walking, running, and exercising their dogs. Often, there's a ballgame of some type going on with spectators sitting on the very slope where the proposed tower would be located. People come there to relax and unwind, and the last thing they need to see is this huge reminder of the technology that's become such a pervasive part of our lives today. The school grounds are a significant community gathering place, and obviously, the tower would affect hundreds of people, not only those living within three hundred feet. I believe that part of the commission's responsibility is to promote livability. Livability is a somewhat nebulous term, which may mean one thing to me and something entirely different to everyone in this room. With that in mind, I would suggest that the commission members need to consider the livability issue for all those who use the school grounds, not just those who live within three hundred feet. I would respectfully ask you to vote to deny this application if for no other reason than because the majority of people whose daily lives will be affected by its approval have had absolutely no voice in this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis, before you leave, the city required the applicant to post a blue sign on the property, which was there when I made my site visits.
Yeah, very difficult to read when you're driving by.
Well, yeah, you have to pull over, I know that.
I understand that.
There's an issue with that.
Yeah.
But I certainly appreciate the time and effort that you've taken to craft this information, but have you told what you've said to us to the school board?
Oh, yes.
Because I think.
I believe you have a copy of an email I sent to the school board.
Yeah, I think, well, I think the message is that they need.
They should have seized the opportunity to get on top of this before it ever got to you guys.
Yeah, they need to be hearing what you're all saying because they are elected officials.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
What was their response?
Well, this, at the meeting where they did give us a hearing, where, which was mentioned previously, where, by Tom, that there was a three-to-three vote to stop the contract, we did get a cursory hearing there, but just my own personal feelings, and I can't say for sure, but I kind of had the sense that it was kind of a wink, wink, let's take a vote kind of thing, and just to kind of get that issue off the agenda for the evening.
I would definitely recommend that you continue to speak with them. I know unfortunately, they meet on Monday nights too when we meet, so.
To make a choice.
Thank you.
Certainly.
The next person to speak is John Falkenstein.
Evening, John Falkenstein, Oregon City.
I spoke with Todd Feigig on October tenth, as was referenced earlier. He's the AT&amp;T executive manager who has been hiring the consultants that we've all been seeing in Oregon City on this issue. I had an amicable discussion with him. Todd asked me why I was opposed to a cell tower at any location on the school grounds, and I explained that the property is owned by the community and used by all ages seven days a week, and that I also had some concerns about safety issues, not just RF radiation, but also the fact that towers do fall down, five hundred-pound branches fall off, workers fall to their death, and more. He responded that the worker deaths were not from falling towers, to which I said through brief internet research, I found that there were five deaths from falling towers this year, so far, that's a few months ago, and that there were nineteen deaths in sixteen months from workers falling from the towers. To me and a lot of other people, this is not acceptable on a school ground. Todd's response was, you can't trust everything you read on the internet. And note, he did not dispute the numbers, and he did not dispute my conclusion that the appropriateness of making decisions that place these risks at John McLaughlin Elementary School, it's just not the right place for it. I asked the Planning Commission to consider the purpose for which the community purchased and maintains this school property and whether this cell tower fits that purpose. Secondly, I looked at the Oregon City Goals and Priorities for two thousand thirteen and fifteen, and within Goal Three, it says enhance the livability of the community, been hearing that earlier. The city and the school district have a joint agreement on use of McLaughlin Elementary School grounds so that the ball. School grounds so that the ball fields and track and other open areas are available and recognized as of an interest to the city for recreational purposes as well as for the school district. As the south end area grows, such open spaces become more essential to the quality of life, and yet, if the proposed tower becomes a reality, we will be sacrificing an important part of this open space for the next twenty-five, thirty years. Placing the cell tower anywhere on the school grounds has serious downsides. Just one of many is if placed near a lacrosse field, a soccer field, a baseball field, it would create a blind spot that makes supervision of children difficult, as they or unsavory types might hide behind fencing. If you have ever been responsible for supervising a large number of children outdoors, as I have, and in this day and age, you understand that creating such blind spots anywhere children play creates a nightmare. Turning these highly valued school and recreation grounds into a cell tower, it does not enhance the livability of the community in the south end area. Clearly, it takes away from the facility that is of increasing importance as the area continues to grow. I hope you'll join many of us in the community in rejecting this application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last person I have signed up to speak is Kathy Hogan.
My name's Kathy Hogan. I live in the area. Granted, I don't see it, but I've testified before, and I agree with everything everybody's saying. I add that I think when the school board and the superintendent and people that are running the school district, and one of their papers comes out and tells you, safety is their first concern for children, I think it's a lie, because they would have never put that cell tower in a school grounds. Patty, I know who she is, she lives about four houses down from me, they would put it in a field, her pasture up high, and they can even put that cell tower higher than they need to there. To my estimation, that would reach far-reaching more people, and not have to put a lot more of those cell towers out if they could go higher, and it will not be interfere with them because it's in their pasture, and they will not see it. She absolutely does not feel that that should be in the school grounds. I believe that if the school board and everybody in the AT&amp;T are so, want one of these things, put it in your darn yard. But you know what? When I asked one of the board members if they had one, they said, yeah, we have it. I said, can you see it from your house? Oh, no. I told them I know a house you could buy then, real quick. And I feel the same way with AT&amp;T. They are not good neighbors, otherwise, they would look and go and see what this property is, and they already know where it is. They're not stupid. Neither are we. Thank you.
Thank you. And one other person to speak on this matter is Paul Edgar.
Paul Edgar, Oregon City. Want to remind people that I come out of the Kanema area, and I've walked the streets and talked to a lot of the parents in Kanema. And the parents in Kanema have equally come back and said that they don't feel that this is appropriate. This is where our kids go to school. But more importantly, to me, one of the things is this value add. And I want to come back and say, what, the most important product that we have is these kids. And they're getting an education and being safe. And I want to just question what this really brings to them in the pluses and minuses. And I still go back and believe that this is an attractive nuisance, besides being something that could potentially have some problems. Any contingency, any contingency that could create lesser value of those kids and their experience and what they're trying to get and what the parents want is just not on the plus side of the ledger. And that's the most important thing. I don't find that there's very much here that's on the plus side of the ledger to be the advantage to all of these young people. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all that I have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time? Okay, see none. We have a request to continue this matter. I have a motion.
I have the motion.
I move.
I move. That we've, excuse me, that we, is it forward this to the...
Continue.
Continue this to the November eleventh?
Tenth.
Tenth, sorry, my car key's going off.
Second. All right, I have a couple of questions for staff. Just as a general question, I recall that one of our statewide planning rules has to do with special districts and us, jurisdictions, not us specifically, but jurisdictions working together with these special districts, like the port and school districts and water districts and all of those other districts. And I am just wondering if we could get a little synopsis of that before our next meeting or in our next packet when this comes back up. What seems to me is that, is that while we are making a decision, will be making a decision at some point in the future regarding the land use application, it seems to me that we've gotten, and I won't say it for the record, but something put in our pocket that really should have been more fully discussed at the school board level, and there's, I mean, we can't do anything about it, but it just seems like there's, there seems to be a little bit of a lack of communication with our school board and their, at least the citizens in this particular, I can't speak to other schools in the city, but we're kind of, we're kind of getting the short end of the stick, is I guess what I'd like to indicate. And it's not, I don't think it has anything to do with fairness, but several people have testified that it seems that this could have, some more could have been done had there been some prior...
Pass the buck.
Maybe that's it, I don't know. So I was just remembering in my brain as the school, as the statewide planning goals were running through my head about that.
Historically, that deals with the coordination of multiple local governments, which would include the special districts when you're looking at long-term planning projects. So let's say we did a UGP expansion, you coordinate with water districts that may be impacted, a fire district, a school district, and making sure that you have sufficient capacity for whatever comes out of that concept planning. So not sure how exactly it would relate to site-specific decisions made by however their decision-making process is made there.
Yeah, I'm just looking at it sort of as a whole. You've got something that's site-specific, you've got something much larger up here, and, you know, I'll be frank and say that I don't think we've ever received any substantive comments from the school district about any plans that come up with long-range, short-range. They generally say, we have capacity, and then we get parents and families coming in here saying, why do we have so many trailers at the school? So, you know, again, we get it in the shorts that way, too. But, yeah, so anyway, you kind of answered the question. It's, to me, it's a bigger picture of sort of that whole thing, and I think I asked you off the record about, you know, where this bus barn move was going to be, and you're right, it was definitely on their property. I found the street, even though it's a private street, had no idea where High School Lane was.
Was.
Never even heard of it, but anyway.
All right, I can take the vote for that?
I've got a comment, if you don't mind. I agree with what Denise is saying. I think the city's been put into a kind of a corner here. I find it kind of curious that the applicant is not here tonight, just out of a matter of courtesy, to ask us directly to continue this. I presume it was by email or by letter, Tony, that asked us to be continued.
Correct.
And the other thing is, I really don't appreciate, is the contract being entered into by the school district with AT&amp;T prior to the application become, I mean, before the planning commission, which sort of dovetails in with what Denise is saying, that it's just a matter of procedure, which comes first, the chicken or the egg, but it seems like we're asked to be, pull a rabbit out of a hat for the AT&amp;T and the school district. So that's what kind of impresses me about this whole process. And I understand due process, and they have a right to make the application, I understand all that, but there's some, there's some fine points here that have been brought before to this commission by some of the people testifying here tonight that I find kind of interesting. That's all I've got to say on it right now.
And I'm personally not familiar if there's six, is there only six people on the board of the school district? Because I've, seven? But they only had a three-to-three, a tie to throw it over?
Somebody must have been gone, yeah.
I see. So it was kind of convenient to have three and three and not make a decision on that board.
Call for the question.
Yep, call the question.
Okay.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Say, maybe.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Do we have the Natural Resource Committee person?
Yes.
Do they actually have a report? Oh, it's a verbal report, okay.
Yeah, well, you know, that's just, I fill in between the blanks, you know? Well, I'm Brian Boyce, I live in the northernmost townhouse in Oregon City, and I'm chair of the Natural Resources Committee for the city of Oregon City. And it came up in a recent meeting that we should be in contact with other appropriate bodies with the city, and that's why we're here. This group was reconstituted and restarted in 2012, it had lapsed, everyone dropped out of the committee at one point, that was back before my day, so. And we got it rolling, I've been chair since the start, and we've done a variety of things that I'd like to go through real quick. We revised the heritage tree ordinance last year, and that is still, before the city council, has not been approved or not, and we've, using that ordinance, we've recommended to the city commission four heritage trees that had been nominated by a variety of people. So I believe all of those have been passed by the city commission. And we've been touring and providing input on the heritage project there in the north end of town. We've been, we did some, a little bit of input on the Union Pacific Trolley Bridge collapse, and, you know, it was pretty obvious what was going on in that one. And I got new glasses, and it's hard to read, I can't read up here anymore. So, and we did some commentary on the proposed Public Works Center trees, street on, they're below Waterboard Park, and also on, was proposed that Waterboard Park be a Heritage Grove underneath the Heritage Tree Ordinance, and we recommended, along with Parks Bureau to the city, that that be done. And we revised our Oregon City Street Tree List, and that was adopted last year in December. And we made a recommendation to the city for tree and beaver management at Clackamette Cove and other city properties. And we went ahead and participated in the Tree City USA applications, and that's an ongoing project that we, the city needs to keep improving their, their results as far as tree canopy and things like that, which the city has successfully done up until this point. And there was also an Arbor Day event that we had input on. And we did commentary on the McLaughlin Phase Two, and last year, we had the first NRC Heritage Tour, which was on a bus tour last year, and this year, we may be doing the same thing, but probably, we're going to put it off till spring rather than doing it in the fall.
What's the bus tour of?
The tour will be most, well, we haven't decided for sure, but it's going to be a river tour. There may also be a bus portion. There is a similar tour being done that may be patterned after we're spending half a day on a riverboat and half a day on a bus tour to see a broader range of what's going on in the city. It looks real different from the river than it does from ninety-nine, so even though they're so close to each other. And we, we worked our bylaws and have submitted those just recently to the city for approval, and also got, just in the last month, approved our first, first-ever work plan for the next, this year, next. So those are all things that we did, and one of the reasons we wanted to come here is that sooner or later, there's going to be things that could involve us as well as you on the same issue. So when natural resource issues come before you, we are quite willing to put our two cents in and cooperate with you on looking at what's going on and what needs to be decided. So, and we're just, here we are, and we're part of the city, too, you know, so we can cooperate when the time comes for that sort of thing.
I won't put our fabulous staff on the spot, but we have had one work session with the Natural Resources Committee. We've been trying to meet on a regular basis with the other committees within the city, and I think it's probably, we might be needing to go back and redo it again just to catch up with everybody.
Yeah.
Couple of things I wanted to either put, you know, give you food for thought, but one of the things I was thinking of the other day as I'm going up and down Malala Avenue is that we have, there is a whole list of invasive species and noxious weeds that have been put out by the state. And I noticed the last time I was down at Clackamette Park, which I don't, unfortunately, don't go down as much as I'd like, but there, and I can't think of the name of it, but it's something, Japan is something, growing right by the boat, near the boat dock where the big cement pad is. And I think, you know, that's something that we probably need to, in terms of natural resources, need to get the word out to citizens. And then I've also noticed, up and down the city, we have lots of trees of heaven that they are insidious, and they can grow in the smallest little crack, and next thing you know, it's a giant tree. And they really, you know, we really should be working on something that comes out in the water bill or something, so people can identify these things and remove them.
Yeah, we just talked with our, the new head of operations for parks, and he's much more interested in pursuing that thing. Oregon City has, in our climate, the Tree of Heaven likes dry places.
Oh, yes.
And Oregon City has lots of dry places because of the exposed rocks and so on, and there's a place about a block from here where someone took out a Tree of Heaven, and it came back, and it's cracking the sidewalk again. And, you know, but there's many, many invasives, and I offered and would like to make a presentation at some point to any interested agency within the city on that subject.
Yeah, I think it kind of has to be one of those things where I think as residents, we need to take some responsibility. I know that we had a, I'm trying to think of what it's called now, something in my front yard, and when I saw the list, I said, we have to get rid of this, it's now gone, now gone. There's little purple blooms on it, but it's an, it's a, but yeah, the Tree of Heaven, I spent about two hours on a piece of property, pulling out things that were about this tall, and I noticed that their little root systems just go... And I noticed that their little root systems just go and go and go. So I went out a little further and dug and got those up. Yeah, they're not, they're not good.
Yeah.
It is, it is a tree of hell, but it, they're called trees of heaven. I mean, it sounds odd, it's an odd name. I don't know what its, its working name is.
Somebody meant hell, but they had to say heaven.
Say heaven, yeah, yeah.
Well, east of the mountains, it grows in damp canyons. Here it grows on dry rocks, you know, and, but it's adapted, it's one of the worst invasives.
Very well.
Yeah. Nationwide, it's worse back east than it is here.
That's what I was thinking of.
Oh, butterfly bush, that one, that purple one.
Yeah, they're considered to be a noxious weed now.
It's a, it's a huge subject and there's a lot of invasives out there. And I, I would agree that the city should be doing more. And that's something to recommend to the city commission for next, you know, their next session in January.
We could have a, you know, little flyer come out in the water bill saying, there's a bounty on these, you know, every time you take one up.
We'll give you a bounty towel.
There you go. Whatever we could give them, you know, some, some trinket of some sort, you know, the person that collects the most gets something. So the other thing that, that I was interested in is that it's my understanding, we have sort of an unofficial policy about allowing people to remove street trees and then they can pay to not, to put them back in. And I would like to suggest that we, as a, as jurisdiction, look at, different areas of the city have different needs. And if we're going to be a tree city, I don't think we should be encouraging people to take trees out and then get to pay to not put them back in. So enough said about that.
Yeah. And, you know, our discussion was that, yes, that's true. And it's also true that people want their tree freedom, you know, and be able to do what they want. And, and I was involved with the county's efforts to come up with some sort of tree ordinance and was at, right at the birth of the Tea Party and there was people that said Obama was sending out his criminal minions to.
Plant trees?
To, no, to have a tree ordinance. And I've heard people say that.
Oh, I'm sure. Yeah, I just think different areas of the city, now I know there've been some issues in the newer subdivisions where developers have not planted the appropriate sized tree or they're too big for the parking strip.
Yes.
And, but I think that there can be a recommendation where it's not one size fits all, but, you know, for instance, in the McLaughlin neighborhood, we have a heavy tree canopy. And I think we ought to do whatever we can to encourage people to put in trees that are easily taken care of, don't do sidewalks. And that's our new tree list, I think adequately does that.
Yes, it recommends trees based on how wide.
Wide the parking strip is.
Yeah.
But then for somebody to be able to take a tree out and then say, oh, here city, here's some money, I don't want to put one back in. I'm, I'm thinking there may be, we may need to have some more discussion.
How much money are we talking about?
I don't know what, I don't know what, but, you know, maybe they're going to try to replace the Elms in the library park, but that would take a whole lot of money. But I think there's, there needs to be, you know, because I see that as a contradiction to being a tree city.
Yeah.
In, in a broad, very broad sense.
Yeah. And, you know, you know, I know of a case in Oregon City where there was huge oak trees in private yard and I think the people were getting older and they didn't want to rake up leaves anymore, so they cut them down.
So I think in yards, we have, we have issues.
Yeah. And so there's a lot of, you know, I've suggested this in years past, but have some sort of volunteer effort to rake up leaves for older folks so that they don't get tempted to take out trees, you know? That's an idea.
Well, just so you know, I'm, I'm going to be removing a very large cedar tree from my yard, which was planted in a, either volunteer or something, but it's, it's knocking a building down. That's how bad it is.
That'll happen.
And I wish that it was not where it was, but it is.
Yeah. Well, that, you know, people either plant, they, if it's a native cedar, it could have come up from seed.
I found, I found the little seedlings all in my yard and they're trying to grow on top of my garage right now. I can, I saw a couple of little seedlings. So, you know, believe me, if I could figure out any other way to keep the tree, I would not be taking it out.
They pretty quickly get too big to move, that's for sure.
Are there any other questions or comments? I count as an older person to have someone coming.
I have one question.
Could be an older person.
Has the planning commission taken any actions that have confused or harmed the Natural Resources Committee? I mean, you know, we made a always X and then the next decision, never X. Or anything like that that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. And, you know, we have, we only hear about the stuff that you people are given to work on if there's a strong natural resources element. And, and there's been very few of those up until this point. I think there will be more in the future.
I was complaining about a removal of a sequoia at the last meeting.
Yeah. Those, those are a real odd tree because you can move them quite large. It's amazing how large that they will move.
This one's large. I don't think it's movable.
Well, if it's, if it's a hundred feet, it's lumber, you know? So.
Brian, how do you see the role of your committee in the blue heron site restoration?
Well.
Natural resources.
We would like to be able to recommend that native plants be saved in the appropriate locations that aren't going, that don't need to be built on. And we also think that Metro's looking at it pretty closely in that, that way. And it's most likely what we'd like to see is going to happen anyway, whether we say, say so or not, because of their approach and what they want to do. But there is, I think there's one native plant that's fairly unusual. I won't say rare, but unusual, especially this far inland. It's mostly a coastal plant, but there's a shaded cool area that just happens to have this fern that grows 10 feet tall, you know? So.
As I understand it, Tony, they're, Metro's kind of looking at that restoration of resting areas for the salmon coming upstream.
Mm-hmm.
And they're going to be looking at that pretty, pretty hard. Is there any coordination between Metro and Brian's committee or your office? Obviously your office, but.
I think it'd be, it's a similar coordination that we've had with other committees where we come in and provide updates and answer questions and, and take feedback as we've gone through the public, the public engagement process. We're not at a stage where we're designing plant lists or habitat, I mean, that's, that's, we need to get through the land use hearings first at this point.
Any other questions or comments?
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So the next item on our agenda is a work session. Sign code update?
Well, you don't know, it could be falling like, falling down.
It's a little rough.
Don't want to.
I wasn't sure if I needed deck and cover.
Nope, there was no metallic pings. We'll let you, that's a 10-16 on the 16.
That's right, that's a 10-16.
We'll let you know, Charles, if you got a dash. What was that?
Yeah.
You want to break?
Push them out of the way.
Sacrifice yourself.
You were dreaming. You didn't see the revised agenda?
No.
They snuck it in. Jeez. There's no rest for the wicked.
And that's me on this.
So you know what'd be really terrific while Laura's coming up, if, if he took his notes and wrote up just a little one-page report so that we have all that in writing.
Brian?
I heard that.
We'd love to, if you would.
You like to burn paper.
Volunteer to write up a copy of the report that you gave us to submit, that'd be great. We can have that attached to the meeting minutes.
I have my rot notes.
Do you want him to come up?
But I said stuff that wasn't.
We're in the work session.
So I just write up something a little more.
It, it's up to you. It, it's, it'd be nice to have.
Bullet points, bullet points are good.
Have that in, in the record.
Okay, we'll take that.
That should go through, go through Tony's office.
That sounds good.
Good evening.
Thank you, Laura. Welcome back.
Thank you very much.
We'd be done with this by now, huh? But we fooled you.
You know what? We want to be thorough, so we're taking our time to make sure that we're doing a really good job. And I think we are.
That was extremely diplomatic.
Well, so we're here tonight because it's been such a long process to just catch up on what we've done, where our code's at, where we're going, so we can move forward.
What you're saying is that we've probably forgotten everything. You're going to remind us.
I'm trying to remember this pregnancy, you know, my family. It's all clear now.
Thank you.
So we're working on updating our sign code. You know, we've been doing this for quite some time. We're looking at signs on private property as well as signage on the right of way. Here's some examples of our current sign code on the screen right now. We, our goal is to come up with signage standards which are safe, clear, fair, and supported by the community. Our big legal disclaimer is that we have to be content neutral, so we can't read the sign to determine if it is okay or not. We look at the sign height, size, material, things like that, but not actually the content. So we've been meeting for a while now. We've had a aggressive public involvement process. We've had over 20 community meetings. This is what, our fourth planning commission work session. We've already had five planning commission hearings on the matter. We had a community open house. We put together a community advisory team who met a few times and came up with a report with recommendations for standards for signage. Staff took that report and came up with our draft sign code. There are places in the footnotes of the draft sign code where you can kind of see comments where there's either no recommendation or there was a disagreement with the recommendation in those reports. So now at the planning commission hearings.
So just how much does Tom pay you to make sure he gets in each picture? Is it the same shirts?
We are coming back to you with the planning commission hearing in a couple of weeks on October 27th. And we'll have a third version of our sign code at that time. It is very similar to the second version of our sign code, which is dated May 12th, which is the current version today.
You see, that's October 27th.
Mm-hmm. And so at that point, we'll be asking for approval of the sign code. So we sort of wanted to just refresh on what happened to this point and make sure that we address any outstanding issues. So real, real quick, we're just summarizing our code. We're not going through any numbers and here's some pictures that are not to scale and drawn by a planner, so sorry about that. So they're examples of what you can do in our draft code. You can, for single-family, two-family zones, you can have a wall sign, a couple of lawn signs and a sign in the right of way, which is R-O-W. Or you can have a freestanding sign, a couple of lawn signs. For example, you may want to have a for sale sign or a political sign. And then a sign in the right of way if you'd like as well. So multifamily zoning designations, you can have both a wall sign, a freestanding sign, a couple of lawn signs and one in the right of way.
On the same frontage?
Two ancillary signs per property, one wall sign and one freestanding sign per frontage, maximum of three each of them. And then one sign in the right of way per frontage, so.
Laura?
Yes.
On those signs in the right of way, the only thing that concerns me is sight distance clearance for traffic control and, you know, that kind of stuff. Because, boy, I'm telling you, those things can be deadly. They really can. You can't see around those things. You pull out in front, in traffic or there's a kid on a bike behind it or something like that. Are you talking about in a residential district where kids might be riding their bike and stuff like that?
Yes, they are allowed, in our draft code, they're allowed both in residential as well as non-residential districts. There's restrictions from where they can be placed, so we have ADA standards we have to comply by. So there has to be so much walking space next to it. And then also, I'll show you later, there's a couple of diagrams for where they can be placed in relationship to a corner. We want to make sure that they're not blocking any driver's ability to drive or pedestrian's ability to walk as well.
I do want to concur with what you said, the, you know, now that it's political season, a couple of people that are running for office who live in the vicinity of where I live, which could be very broad, started sticking their signs in the parking strip. And I just happened to have a copy of the sign code related to those signs and I called one of them and said, you know, you can put them in people's yards, but don't put them in the parking strip.
Yep. So our, right, our current sign code says, if you're going to do a sign in the right of way, you need approval by the city engineer. The city engineer hasn't given any approval, so our new sign code will provide an avenue to do that. And with that will come rules and standards for where they can be placed, so they'll be safer.
We're in that same vein of what they're asking, is there, I have not read it entirely, but is there such a thing as distance from like where your store, where you can place a sign, like in, let's say downtown, you can place it a whole block away to get people to come down, there's a block down?
There is, and I have a specific question regarding that for you, if I could just save your comment for just five minutes.
That's fine.
But that is a great question.
I still contend that I, my personal preference is, is that we not allow signs in the public right of way unless, you know, there's, I'm just thinking, okay.
I think it's one of the ones that was I was saying, so let's.
Yeah, okay.
Let's get there and have a discussion. If you guys need to make a decision on that.
And I would suggest, let Laura go through her whole presentation. Let's hold our questions to the end. She'll probably answer a lot of our questions in her presentation.
So signs for conditional uses residential zones, here's some examples of what you can do. Wall sign, freestanding, a couple lawn signs, sign in the right of way. Signs for commercial mixed-use industrial zones, it's written, so it will include the blue heron property, since we know that that's coming up with the new name for the zone. There's a couple of combinations of signs you can do. You'll notice that it does allow banners, which we don't allow now, but you can do them for 30 days at a time for a certain number of times per year. Our new code will limit the number of ancillary signs. It'll be slightly reduced, someone you can have now. So you can have a flag and a small sign or a couple of small signs, any combination you see there. Signs in the right of way, as we talked about, we don't have any standards now. We will have signs in the current draft of our sign code. We allow cross-street banners in the locations where you see cross-street banners up today. And then we will also allow A-frame signs in the right of way. There's a picture of one right there.
In downtown.
All over the city. So in residential as well as in non-residential zoning designations, there's, the standards are different though. We've worked with the Realtors Association to come up with the specific times for when signage is allowed in the right of way in residential zones. And it's, it matches Portland, but it's essentially around when realtors would put up A-frame signs and say, open house or something like that. So it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday between certain times of day.
I would consider that temporary type sign.
So we, in our new code, we allow public murals, which we don't allow now. Now we have standards for wall signs. You get twice the length of the wall for total signage. So if your wall is 50s feet long, you get 100 square feet of signage on that wall. When you start to exceed that and it's painted like this, we would sort of think of it maybe as a mural because we're content neutral. So what we did is we did a inventory of all existing murals in the city. We're almost done with that. We'll be vetting it with a couple other neighborhood groups, including downtown as well, to make sure that our list is correct, since we're exempting existing murals. All new murals will have to go through a type three process or approval from our arts committee, commission. And I will tell you more about the arts commission in two weeks. Prohibited signs, we added to the list attention flags, air-blown signs, abandoned signs. We now allow two flags per property. We didn't have a separate definition for attention flags, which is the type of flag you'll see there. So now we have a separate definition for them and they are prohibited. And we're more specific about prohibiting air-blown signs and abandoned signs as well. Abandoned means there is no sign in the sign for six months or more. So it's content neutral. All right, so now we need your help. We think that we have a really good draft of our sign code. There's a couple of issues we just want to highlight again and make sure we are correct on where our recommendation is or, so let us know. I will highlight what our current version of our code says. Let us know if you would need that changed in any particular way. The first one is the number of signs in the right of way in non-residential areas. We could talk about residential areas as well. So our code allows one A-frame sign on the ground in the right of way per property frontage. So right now, again, we don't allow any. So right now, again, we don't allow any, so we are opening up, um, a place or a new type of sign for the public, which they currently do not have. They can, in our new code, place A-frame signs on their private property. So if you're looking at a property, you could see a series of A-frame signs, and one might be put forward on the right-of-way, and one, you know, a couple might be on their own particular property. Um, we limited it to one per frontage, because we wanted to make sure that there wasn't too much clutter. We wanted to keep the primary use of the public right-of-way for public purposes. But there was discussion previously about allowing additional A-frame signs on the ground in the right-of-way. In some of the meetings, the, the public or commissions talked about one for every fifty feet of frontage, or tying it with the number of business entrances, specifically downtown. So, our draft code right now says one per frontage. So a couple of questions with that is, do we still want to allow signs in the right-of-way on the ground, these A-frames specifically? And do we want to allow them in both zoning de- designations, residential, non-residential? Is one per frontage appropriate? What are your thoughts?
I'll jump up real quick. I think one per frontage is plenty, and I don't think we need fifty feet of, or any of the, um, or one per business entrance downtown. They have to figure out what they're gonna do. They get one per frontage. And if they want to put it nine blocks away, saying, "In nine blocks, we're going to have, you know, you know, the whatever is open," that's, then that's fine. If they want to put it in front of their store, saying, "Entrance, grand opening, happy hour," then that's what they can do.
The difference on that, Damon, is, um, is now that I'm a store owner, having one out front's fine. But when you have stores that are a whole block away putting signs in your block, um, it's kind of strange. I mean, I've seen some that are right on the corner.
So, I have another.
One sec, let us just clarify on the placement and how that's gonna occur, so that might help some of this discussion.
I have another question in a minute about where the sign is placed in relationship to your shop. So this question is just how many there could be, regardless of who places it there.
So, then I have a further question on that. Is, you're allowed one for your store. Let's say I have one for my store, but I've been allowing, let's say, Rocky Smith to put up something about his ghost tours, because he doesn't have any storefront, but he wants to let people know about that. Now, that's not my business, but it's, he needs to have something downtown for that. Um, what kind of, uh, what does that present?
The two questions I'll ask you in a minute are, do you need a approval from the abutting property owner? So, it's gonna be in front of my property. Do, should I have a say in what sign goes there? And then also, can I place a sign? If I own a shop, can I place my sign a couple blocks down? If I own that sign, I have a business license that says, "My business is in this location, but I want to put a sign in another location." When it's, um, for something that's not related to a location like political signs or something like that.
I guess.
It's a little difficult.
I'm, I guess I'm gonna say that I think that the situation downtown is unique and different from any other commercial areas. And I think that signage down there needs to be looked at in consideration with the specific circumstances. There are wider sidewalks, there are a lot more businesses, and I would like to see something separate for them, because I can't say that signage that's appropriate for downtown is appropriate for Malala Avenue. Whereas Malala Avenue signage is not appropriate for downtown. So, I would say that in terms of other areas that are not residential, that are not downtown, I agree with Damon. I think having one sign for every fifty feet of frontage is an administrative nightmare, and, you know, they should, they, you know, I'm, again, I just, you know, people, I think that having, uh, too many A-frames out there and the, you know, and the flags, I, I was thinking of you when I went down McLaughlin Boulevard. There's a new fast-food restaurant. They had a blowing guy, they had flags, they had sign. I mean, I was having a, you know, a fit, looking at all this, but it's in the county. So I kind of had to say, "Okay, this is in the county. I can't just go ballistic," but it was awful. And I mentioned to the manager when I went up to order, I said, "You know, you got a lot of sign clutter there." I said, "Everybody knows you're here. You don't need to have all this stuff. It's too much." I mean, it was like five flags, and the blowing guy, and little A-frames. I mean, it was just, it was bad, but anyway. So, for downtown, I think that, you know, again, to me right now, just as a citizen, there are too many A-frames. Everybody's got one, and they're all over the place. And we don't tell people where to put their business. So if you're around the corner on Railroad Avenue, and you want to have an A-frame over on Seventh and, and, and Main, you know, what happens to the person who's got their business at Seventh and Main? You know, where, where's their sign gonna go? Now we're gonna have their sign from around the corner and this other sign, and it's just, it'd be really kind of cool if we had some kind of a directional sign that was one thing that people would pay for. It might be on that corner, saying, "So-and-so's business that way," or "So-and-so's business that way," and it could be changed, instead of everybody having an A-frame.
You're suggesting not, that, no A-frames?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it's, right now, it's too much. You walk down the sidewalk, and you're kind of dodging everything down there.
Because I know, like, in some of our buildings, they don't allow anything on the awnings, because they don't want anything on the awnings. So the only way to let people know that you're open is to have an A-frame, because nothing can go on the awning.
I know, but again, those are choices people make. You know, they, they make their decision on where they're gonna go.
You make the decision, but the leasers are telling you what they want on their outside of their buildings, especially since they're redoing a lot of these buildings.
They have to look at that. You know, that, that's a whole different, I don't have any control over that. I can't tell somebody not to lease on Railroad Avenue. But then, you know, do we have to have sign pollution on Main Street because they're on Railroad Avenue, or people don't know that they're there? I, I, you know, it's a conundrum. I don't know what the answer is, but I'm just saying it's, it, right now, there's, existing, what we have right now, it's too much.
I thought the last time we had had this discussion that the, the tenant of the, the property that had that frontage had first priority for that frontage.
I think our recommendation would be that at a minimum, the adjacent property owner, if, if I'm gonna go put down my sign, and it's not in front of my business, that the adjacent property owner needs to sign off on that, so that you don't have folks just putting signs.
Everywhere.
Right, well, I guess, that's where I was going, is that I thought our last discussion on this was that whoever, uh, had a business on that frontage that we're talking about, that you get one sign, has first dibs on that frontage. And if you're not going to use it, you can let somebody else put their sign in, in that spot.
Yeah.
But if it's your frontage, you have first, first, uh, first right-of.
Right of refusal.
Right, I'm thinking.
You don't have to put anything there if you don't want something.
Exactly, but you have first right of refusal for that. They don't have any A-frames.
That's what we're recommending.
If the guy two, two blocks down or around the corner decides that he wants to, uh, put a sign over there, he's gonna have to come to you and say, "Can we make a deal where I get to put my sign up part of the day," or something like that.
Is there agreement on the commission with, I'll start with that one first. Is there agreement that the property owner, the adjacent prop?
Yeah, I would agree.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, but here's the question.
Here's the question.
How do you know that that sign does or doesn't belong to the property owner when you don't get to read it?
Because the property owner will have to sign the application.
Yeah, they have to get a permit for him now.
And if, and if the property owner, at that point, we're content neutral. If he wants, if the property owner wants to advertise for somebody four blocks down, that's their business. But we're giving him first right of refusal for the frontage where their business is located. And how they choose to use that is on them.
So if I own ECP and I don't need an A-frame, I could let Tom.
Safeway, oh, yeah, exactly.
Put his sign on the corner where it's more visible.
It's content neutral.
As long as I get a permit and it's, I, he gives, I get, he gives my permission.
Um, so, so our code currently says that when you turn in your sign permit for A-frame, that we need this signature from the abutting property owner. So that's where the first right of refusal kind of comes in. That's, so, we're just looking for that signature.
Well, the other thing is, I kind of heard from the peanut gallery, is property owner versus business.
We're a property owner.
Property owner.
Okay, so if there's six businesses with six doors in one building.
This is where the discussion went last time. Was it one per property? Was it one per fifty feet, twenty-five feet, ten feet, or was it one per business in the building? Was it one per entrance? And, and we never, we never were consensus there.
I just want to make sure.
So I think that's where we're trying to get to.
I'm not forgetting that we've hashed this, is what I'm.
And then, you know, Denise brought up, is there a difference between, let's just say, let's just call by zoning type. Is there a difference between how mixed-use downtown functions relative to mixed-use corridor, straight, commercial, and industrial? And does this commission want to make a distinction in the approach to A-frames?
I think Denise is right. I think there is a, a distinct difference. One of it's got to do with traffic volume and traffic speed. But what I haven't heard discussed here is, uh, where's the public interest come in? We're talking about the, uh, the property owner interest and the business owner interest, and I understand that. But, uh, the public has got a, an interest, a dog in his fight too, and, uh.
How do you mean that?
Well, one, one of the ways is clutter. Clutter. We're trying to, really what we're trying to control, and we're not saying it, is clutter. How many signs are.
No, we have said that.
Well, yeah, but we've said it, but we haven't emphasized it.
I, I, I'd say that that's probably exactly the point that both Denise and Damon are making too. And, and if we haven't stated it, clutter is the biggest concern I have.
Clutter is the one that we're trying to control, and frankly, I don't know how you do it, because that's, that's the issue.
Well, here, here's, here's the thing. We talked about the last time, and, you know.
Yeah, I was looking at my notes.
I, I don't have to go back to my notes, because I remember some of these discussions like it was yesterday, that right now we have no signs, uh, A-frame signs allowed.
But they're everywhere.
And they're everywhere.
They're everywhere.
So.
They're cluttering.
And, and they're clutter. So, the, the problem is not that we don't have regulations in place. Problem is there's no enforcement. So, now, we're talking about allowing one per frontage. But if there's no enforcement, we're still gonna have a dozen signs down there on that block. So, you know, I, I think all of this discussion is great, and it's, it's, you know, trying to build the box, whatever size we decide we want it to be. But if everybody just ignores it and there's no enforcement, it, this is a waste of time.
Agreed. We've, we've heard that in a significant way throughout this entire process.
I think that's gotta be the strength of the sign code.
That's what we argued about last.
It's gotta be the foundation. You start with that, and then you work.
A lot of our discussions with city commission will talk about how we come to a strategy to ensure that it is enforced consistently over the long run.
I think, since I'm new downtown, and obviously I've got a different perspective now, I probably wouldn't have had this before, but I don't see that much clutter of all those A-frames that I thought there was down there. On my block alone, right now, I'm the only one. And, uh, there was one on the corner, but now mine's the only one. There's product out on the street, on the sidewalk sometimes, but as several people have told me, coming off the Westland Bridge and around, they're moving so fast. They said, "If you didn't have a sign out there, we wouldn't have known where you were." But, um, as I walk up and down Main Street, I don't see that many A-frames out there all the time. A few, but nothing that's actually cluttering up people walking. I've watched the, the people that do walk. It's not like a downtown Portland street where it's crowded with tons of people.
But there's clutter in other parts of the city with A-frames.
Yeah. Just not on Main Street that I see it.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not sure I see the reason to distinguish between zones, but, yeah, to get back to the clutter thing, if we keep it in property owner versus business, there's already a decluttering effect that's starting to happen at that point, because you don't have six A-frames, you have one. The second element is, then the property owner gets, you know, "I only get one out front. Who's willing to pay for the privilege?" And whether it's the guy down the street, or whether it's tenant number two, or whether it's tenant number six, you know, that's, that's up to them.
But if you're the property owner and you own the whole block, that's.
But I, but I think, I think you do have a point. The thing is, it, it does have to do with the zone. In downtown, you're gonna have more pedestrians, and so the signage there needs to be at a scale that people can see when they're walking. You know, they're looking at a blade sign, or they're looking at an A-frame. Even though the speed downtown, I believe, is twenty-five, when I'm down there, like you said, people are whipping off the brick. I mean, I do a lot of business at ECP, and I usually walk, park a block away and walk, and trying to cross between me, familia, and them, it's like, if you're not a pedestrian, they're just. Yeah, you are, right there. It scares the bejesus out of me. So I'm not sure how they're seeing it. But I, but I think downtown is different. Wider sidewalks, I'm, I'm more, I notice these, you know, like at the Mazies, I'll notice what they have on, on the sidewalk. They don't really need a sign, so to speak, because I'm seeing the antique furniture, or bushes who has something out. The A-frames, you know, maybe I don't see them so much, but the ones I do see, uh, they're out there. I mean, and I, and again, I think, again, it's a wider sidewalk, you've got a pedestrian path. Malala Avenue, I don't really know if an A-frame sign would really help, because people are just, it's more auto-oriented. So, signage there is gonna be a little different. You know, maybe signs that are like, uh, monument signs would be much easier to read, because you're not trying to look up to see the thing up in the air. When you're driving, you're supposed to be kind of just scanning. So I, I do, I do think there is a difference with downtown.
Do we want to allow signs in the right-of-way only downtown then? Or?
It kind of depends on what the sidewalk situation is in, you know, I'm thinking Malala Avenue, or, you know, where else is there?
There's multiple sections of Malala where you're not allowed an A-frame, because there wouldn't be four feet of clear space to walk on a five-foot sidewalk. Most of us are gonna put up a one-foot wide.
Yeah.
GIS.
We need to maintain our ADA access.
Exactly.
GIS is working on a map for you to have on the twenty-sixth also, that will show the sidewalk width, so you can kind of see where, um, they would be allowed.
If we could have excluded zones, that would, I think, I would like that, instead of doing, doing zoning.
Well, you know, I, I, I'm thinking, based on what Tony's saying, we don't necessarily need to make a distinction between downtown and elsewhere. It's more a matter of the width of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
If the sidewalk is too narrow to put a sign in the right-of-way, then that would exclude that area.
I would, I would totally agree with that.
And, and so, I, it, it seems to me that if, if you have, uh, an eight-to-ten-foot wide sidewalk, you're easily gonna have room to get a sign in the right-of-way without being interfering with the public, uh,
access.
As far as, uh, walking. But if, if you only have a five-foot sidewalk, you don't have room to put a sign without impeding pedestrian traffic.
Here, here's an, a couple of images, does this work, about our clearance standards. So we need four feet for ADA access. So, one of the pictures shows if there's a curb, you'll have, um, the sign, and then you need at least four feet. And the other one shows where there's no curb. From the end of the street pavement, you'll need four feet before you can place a sign. So there's two different standards based on if there's a, a curb or not.
The thing that I see probably the most is, you know, is on your drawings here, it's like where your car door is, because the, the spaces downtown are not, which I wish they would put little lines so people know where the mark, because they don't. You open your car door, and boom, there's somebody's sign right there. So you're trying to get out of your car, and there's something there.
I've not seen that yet, but.
I saw somebody do it the other day. I, it wasn't me, but I saw that. And I thought, "Oh, they got out, moved the sign, opened the, got the car door the rest of the way open, and, and went on their merry way."
Tom and Jonathan, we'll, we'll take your comments after she's finished her presentation.
Okay.
But yeah, I think that's, that's a good, that might be a, who said the exclusion? Did you say that, that?
Well, I'm, I'm, yeah.
So, the question is how many signs per frontage? It sounds like we want the city to not have a one-size-fits-all. We want it to be slightly different for some locations and others.
He doesn't.
Is, is a one per frontage okay, given the fact that the sidewalk's sort of?
One per frontage can, with the consideration of the pedestrian, uh, right-of-way. So, if, if we don't have more than five feet, then there is no room for a sign.
What do you mean by frontage? Is, are you referring to the, the, the building owner or?
Per property tax lot.
One per property tax lot.
So you're, you're in a, you're in a building that's one building with multiple tenants.
So, we'd only get one for that whole building?
Yep.
But you can have multiple signs on your own property in addition as well. I mean.
Hard done there, because everything's cur, everything's up to the, there's a lot.
It is. That's why I'm saying downtown is different.
The sign in the right-of-way at this point.
So the park is the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to, so we'll leave that, um, section of code as is. And then, the other one is talking about the relationship of where the sign is located in relation to where the business is located. So in our draft version right now, it says, "If I own an A-frame sign, and..." So, in our draft version right now, it says, "If I own an A-frame sign, and I go and turn in a permit to get, put it in the right-of-way, city staff would look to see if, as the owner of the sign, I have a business license. And if I have a business license, where's the location on that business license? And they would make me put the sign right in front of my business. So, it couldn't be down the street in front of somebody else's property. Is that something that we want to keep in, or do we want to take out? So, we know that we already need a budding property owner's signature, but in addition, I can only put it in front of my place. So, the other thing is, if it's a political sign or something, and it's not really related to a business license, then that could go anywhere. I mean, this rule only applies to people who have a business license.
So, we're talking about non-residential properties?
I don't think you can tell that.
Yeah, wait, something's going on. I'm confused.
So, the...
The sign can say anything.
The sign could say anything, but if the owner of the sign has a business license, and the business license has a specific location, say like a shop...
I thought we already just talked about that I can, as the property owner, allow somebody else to park a sign in front of my property with permission.
That's not what our code says now. It says, it says if you're...
You can put it from your business.
So, we just want to round it out on that.
If it was a political sign that didn't have like a location base to it, you could do that?
There was disagreement last time. Denise wanted only the sign associated with the property allowed in front of the, to be placed there.
And I agree with that.
Or are we opening it up, as you see with, let's say, the Oregon, with the farmer's market? Are they allowed to put a sign three blocks down if they negotiate with the property owner there to put their sign out there? That's what we're trying to figure out.
I thought that's what I just talked about.
You get one sign on your frontage.
Right.
If you want it to be your sign, you get the first opportunity to put it there. And another adjacent property has to get your permission to put their sign in front of your property.
That's still true.
But there wasn't agreement on that last time. So, we're trying to, this was one of the items that we identified that we needed to come back and revisit.
So, there's two pieces to our code. One is that you need a budding owner's signature or approval. So, that still is the case. The second piece of our code says, "If I own a hat, a store of some type, and..."
I own a milkshake shop.
A milkshake shop, really great milkshakes. And I want to put my milkshake shop shine... Wow! In front of...
Say that again faster.
Oh, dear!
She signed for her milkshake shop.
In front of your business, I can't. But if I want to put my political sign in front of your business, I can't. But you still need the property owner's signature either way.
No, we have to be content neutral. So, it doesn't matter if it's a political sign or a...
We're looking at the ownership of the sign. And does the owner of the sign have a business license?
But you keep coming back to political sign. That's irrelevant. If it's political, I can't make a distinction versus the milkshake shop.
It was just an example of a business, or a sign that doesn't have a business license location.
It comes back to what we just finished talking about. The content of the sign is irrelevant. If the guy down the street, three blocks over, comes to me and asks permission to use my frontage, I can grant him the permission to do that regardless of what the sign says.
Okay. Okay, we'll make sure our code says that.
Is there an agreement on that?
Are we in agreement on that?
Is everybody in agreement on that now?
Yes, well...
No.
The other problem with the way this is drafted, at least from your little, your summary here, is if the property owner is actively property management, then, and they happen to own a business on Third, and a business on Sixth, and a business on Ninth, and they've got an A-frame sign, they could conceivably put, you know, and it could say, you know, Halloween store, or milkshake shop, or whatever. Because the business owner, under this rule, the property owner, has applied for and got permission. And it could be, the milkshake shop sign is three blocks away because he also owns that property under that business name. So, I think that's just a can of worms you don't want to get into.
The more we talk about it, the more it does sound that way, huh?
I hadn't thought about it that way.
So, we'll just say you need a budding property owner's signature.
Yes.
And that will clear it up?
Yeah. I don't want any more Halloween stores.
Okay. So, new issue is where A-frame sign is located within the right-of-way. Our current code that it has, says it has to be within six inches of the curb. This is, we kind of refer to as a furniture zone, so this is where trash cans and street trees are.
Benches.
Benches. The intent of putting it there was that, you know, you could get a longer straight stretch with nothing. For the ADA, we need the four feet. We want to make sure that the four feet is as long with no obstructions as possible, and it doesn't sort of dodge this way and that way when you're walking downtown. But there was discussion about making the signs be located sort of on the other side of the sidewalk or adjacent to buildings. Are we happy with what the code says now?
Six inches from the curb.
Yeah. And as someone who may own a sign, I can just move it along wherever that parking stall is, so it avoids door dings or whatever.
I have kind of mixed feelings about that because, you know, once the cars are there, can't really see the sign.
I could go either way, yeah.
I mean, unless, again, unless you're... Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You're pedestrian, so you're going to go down, you know, the street. Like I said, my eye seems to get caught more by, you know, the metal stools that Bush's has out. I see that, you know. I don't need a sign to tell me that that's Bush's furniture, and that's, he's got, but he has, in one of your things, he's got an A-frame out. I'm like, why do you need an A-frame? You got stuff.
People know where you are.
Put your signs...
He's got a big...
He's got a big thing.
When you come down to what the purpose of those signs are for...
What is the purpose?
If you're driving by, I challenge you to read...
Oh, no.
On that particular sign that is on the example, anything below the word "Bush", you're not going to read.
No.
So, it's only to identify that there is a business there. It's not going to give you any detail of information if you're driving by. I submit that the purpose of this sign is really more for the pedestrian.
Yeah.
Because the pedestrian will have time to stop and look at the sign. The driver's going by at 25 or faster, and they're not going to have a chance to read it. They'll maybe see the sign and go, oh, there's a business there.
So, it's kind of a purpose, because mine says "just open", that's all it says, the name of the business.
So, I guess, you know, I'm appreciative of the concern of the amount of infrastructure, whether it be trash receptacle, street trees, light poles that are going closer to the curb. But at the same time, I, you know, I think we should be rather protective of trying to create, maintain that four-foot clear space on a seven-foot sidewalk. And I think you have the ability to maneuver your vehicle to allow a passenger out, and then pull up another three feet without dinging your door. Rather than having, you know, this constant weaving in and out of, around a sign that's adjacent to a building next to a tree well, back over. To me, I would rather see it six inches from the curb.
You have two situations here. Because people who don't have A-frames have things out.
In this one.
They have things out in the right-of-way. So, you get somebody coming along in a wheelchair, and let's say they're not your friends, you're trying to get around them, so you're dodging the sign, you're dodging the furniture, you're dodging them to get to where you're going. And I can tell you, on court day, I did that the other day.
You make it sound like it's all the time, but I don't really see it.
No, no. It was, the one day I was downtown, it was court day, and there were people cruising.
So, is there agreement that it should be within six inches of the curb?
I agree.
I agree.
Thank you.
And if cars are getting in the way, eventually they'll stop using the sign because it's not effective.
Or they'll stop driving and use bikes.
Well, the sign, I didn't have a problem with dinging the car. I always just saw somebody couldn't get their car door open because the sign was...
Motorcycle.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Next issue, or towards the end of the list of issues, is non-conforming signs. Our draft code says that all signs that are legally constructed can stay there until they're removed by the owner. It also says if you move it or want to alter it in some way, it has to come into compliance with the code. Or if it's damaged to a great extent, more than 50% of the value, then it also has to come into compliance with the code. We had an amateurization period that we put into our code in 1994 that said, "We're changing our code. All the signs that don't match this code have to go away in 10 years." 2004 came and went. Now it's 2014, and we still never enforced it. So, we have a lot of signs that were legally constructed that don't match both today's code or our proposed code. One thing to remember is that there are quite a few signs that are existing now that will be non-conforming with this new code. For example, say of a one-story building, the length of, the size of wall sign is going to be cut in half. So, I would essentially have a non-conforming sign if I had one that was too big. So, there will be a lot of non-conforming signs. The question is how we want to deal with them. Do we want to just say, if you were legal, you know, the onus is on whoever's looking, asking, or, you know, depending on how we go through this enforcement process, it's up to the property owner to prove that it was constructed legally? Or do we want to say, if you were constructed legally with today's code, since we just went through this amateurization period, knowing that if you weren't before, then you would have to be taken down? An example would be like a billboard? Or...
Unless that billboard was constructed prior to our prohibition on billboards. I mean, so this is what...
We have a few.
I do have a concern. Historically, if you constructed something legally under the code that was in place, you're entitled to that until you either take it down, substantially alter it, et cetera. So, I'd be a little leery to just say, if you're not allowed in today's code, even if you were illegal 20 years ago, we're going to make you take it down.
That's changing the goalpost.
Okay. So, last conversation, it made it sound like we were going to go after, if it didn't comply with today's code, we're going to make them take it out.
I think if they were not legal at the time, we went through the last period, and they're still illegal, they need to come down. And I think two years is too long. I think one year, they get one year. They've had 14 years.
We won't be able to accomplish that in one year.
You know? Because if they can't prove that it was put there legally, it needs to go away. I mean, I'm sure you...
You're saying if it was not legal when it was put up?
Exactly. I'm not talking about the legal ones.
How many signs are we talking about? I don't see that many big signs that have been constructed. Is there a lot around the city?
No, I'm not talking about big. I'm just talking about all...
There will be. Once we adopt a sign code, there will be.
I could go...
Well, I mean, I know the billboards, but I was just wondering how many others there might be.
All the billboards we have in town were legally constructed when they were put up. Probably, there's some of those little tiny ones, I think they might have to prove permits, but the big ones...
But then in 2000, they were supposed to have come down by 2004, and we never enforced it, and they're still up. So, we had this 10-year amateurization period.
Who enforces that code enforcement, or just the city? That was never resolved.
So, that'll be a big piece of what we talk about with the city commission, is how we create ownership over the sign code and who enforces it, and how we make sure that they do a good job doing that. So, right now, if you are legally constructed, you can stay, but if you want to touch it, move it, or it gets damaged, it's got to go away.
Yeah.
And we're happy with that?
It's got to be brought into conformity.
Yes. Made smaller, or whatever it is. Brought into conformity.
And that's just like a building that was constructed at a certain point, like the 50% replacement. At a certain point, it's essentially condemned, and it needs to be either demolished and rebuilt, or brought into compliance. I mean, it's the same standard of...
Right, yeah, that's consistent.
It was built legally, and now it's condemned, or being substantially modified. You know, I think, I think we're consistent across the board with that methodology.
Yeah, I mean, if it was legally constructed at the time it was put up, they get to keep
it. If it has an issue, like you said...
Until it gets damaged or changed.
Damage, not, you know, being utilized, whatever, that's a whole different ball of wax.
Right, not, yeah. We have the abandoned code.
Right.
Are you saying that you're going to ask the commission as to how to enforce the sign code as opposed to asking us?
Yeah.
Is that what you're...
It's in their wheelhouse.
We don't have...
We have no authority for enforcement.
We're going to get deputized, Bob. And we're all going to be sign code enforced.
Well, my only reason for asking that is, I still think the strength of the code is going to be in the enforcement, and I think the planning commission's got to have some credibility in terms of what they recommend to the...
Well, the city commission is the only ones that have the authority to budget and create the mechanism for that.
Well, I understand that, but I can, can't we make a recommendation?
Yeah.
That's already in the...
I think when this comes before the city commission, I think we need to show up, and we need to be very vocal about it. Yes, thank you, demonstrative about it.
Yes. We'll let you be our spokesman.
Well, sitting down here at the end, I...
We'll be right behind you, Bob.
No, I've dealt with sign codes before, and I know where Tony's coming from. It's an administrative nightmare, and I've been reading articles on it throughout the United States. Sign codes are a conundrum. They really are.
All right. The next issue is, do you want the city to verify if there's a business license when someone turns in a sign permit application? Right now, our code says, if you turn in a sign for, if you turn in an application for a sign in the right-of-way, you tell me, you know, who owns the sign, and then I look up to see if there's a business license, or if there needs to be a business license. If there is, then they have to get the business license before we issue the sign. That doesn't apply to signs on private property. So, the question is, do you want the city staff to verify if they have a valid business license at all? Or with signs in the right-of-way, signs on private property, or not at all?
If I own property X, and I want to put up a monument sign on my property...
No, that's not what she's asking about, right-of-way signs.
I know, but I'm saying, regardless of whether it's in the right-of-way or not, they should have a valid business license.
So, do you want us to verify that?
I don't know if you can do that.
What do you mean? You can't do that.
Okay, so you get the content.
Because we're looking at the ownership of the sign.
What if I want to put up something that doesn't have to do with a business? And you're going to make, how are you going to make a determination whether I need a business license or not?
If you're in a commercial zone, you need to be a legal entity there.
But then I'm going to, you're going to stifle my First Amendment right to speech and require me to get a business license for something that doesn't...
Oh, that is poppycock.
All right, well, I guess that one clears that up.
No!
It'd be okay striking.
Speaking of content neutrality, that brings us to, I think, which is the last one, which...
Wait, wait, wait.
Hold on. I don't think they're done on this.
Oh, sorry.
You can see my concern about having potential political advertising in the public right-of-way.[1608.88]
Why would we not require someone to get, you know, so the Oregon City Shop, no, so, let's not use them. Safeway Shopping Center comes in and they want to have a sign, it's on private property, don't we require them to have a sign permit?
Yes, in, in most cases.
So let's take another example, let's say on the corner of Redland Road and Holcomb Boulevard, there's an area that's the right-of-way and that's not, it's, it's, they don't have, that's where political signs go up all the time, but they don't have to have a business.
It is state right-of-way, they are not supposed to be there.
But do they have to have a business license to put up signs there?
They shouldn't be putting any signs there, period. In the Park Place neighborhood-
I see what Tony is saying to-
Park Place neighborhood picks them up on a regular basis.
So it sounds like the concern is if I'm a business owner, but I want to put up a political sign in front of my property, you, you don't need to check if I have a business license because my sign has nothing to do with my business and I have to read the sign to see that it's a political sign, that's nothing to do with my business.
Well, I would say any business owner that would put up a political sign would be alienating one half of their business who doesn't support that candidate and then getting business on the other hand, and they would be stupid to put up a political sign on their property.
But it's not just political.
And then there's lots of other things that-
It's not just commercial property.
The idea that we have to read the sign to determine if a business is associated with it.
I'm talking about commercial or property.
We keep coming back to political on here, but this is, this is just an issue for signs in the right-of-way. And I thought we had already established that the property owner was the one that had the right to put the sign out there.
I agree.
So I don't know why we're even talking about the business license. It's, it's kinda like mixing two metaphors together.
But also, right-of-way, isn't that, does the city have right-of-way on some of the corners?
I mean, we've already established that the business owner has the right to sign there.
Yeah, I'm talking, this could be anywhere in the city.
And he can lend the right to put another sign there.
I apologize, I was thinking that our discussion many, many months ago is to, to look into business license verification when they submit a sign permit.
Well, I think we're getting two things mixed up here. We, we've already established property owner has a right to put a sign in the frontage of his property. So I don't see where the business license is relevant to this discussion.
Because this is more right-of-way anywhere in the city.
Because if it's a commercial, industrial, or mixed-use zone, why would we allow somebody to put a sign that doesn't have anything to do with the businesses there?
How do we know it doesn't have anything to do with the business there?
Well, I don't. I'm just saying, to me, to me, they're linked together. Sign permit, business license.
But does the city not own a right-of-way on the corners and things like that? So that's not a business.
Not the one on Holcomb and Redland, that belongs to the state.
But for the sake of this discussion, it's property here.
I'm just telling you because I know that, because I'm lame escaping there, Tom.
I'm just referring to any part, the city probably has a right-of-way somewhere in the cities.
Also, just as a clarifying, the, this sign code only allows signs on city right-of-way. It doesn't allow signs in state right-of-way.
They don't allow any signs in their state right-of-way.
That's what I was trying to clarify.
They can go along with their big truck and they pick them up.
Okay.
Thank you.
So there was a concern about allowing freestanding signs for home occupations or signs, freestanding signs in residential properties. That was expressed a while ago. And because we're content neutral, if you want to put up a for-sale sign, you have to be able to put up a business sign or a whatever sign you wanted to say. So the draft code does allow freestanding signs on residential properties.
I say no.
I say yes.
Can we just, can we kinda get a sense of where everybody else has, so we can put this one to bed?
A temporary sign to advertise a house for sale, to me, is not a permanent freestanding sign. What I'm concerned about is permanent freestanding signs in residential neighborhoods is totally inappropriate and shouldn't be there. I didn't move into a residential zone so everybody can have a freestanding sign. If they have a sign that their house is for sale, that's gonna be coming and going. It's not gonna be there permanent. The way this sounds to me is it's permanent.
I don't see the word permanent in there.
They are permanent.
It is permanent.
It is permanent. And, and I thought the agreement last time was that we agreed that temporary signs, whether they're real estate or political, were okay, but that-
It doesn't fall into that category.
Okay, then we had the discussion about your home occupation, which then-
Masuse or attorney-at-law or CPA.
And my recollection was we said it was okay to have a sign on the wall.
On their house.
Okay, I guess I missed it there, is there, is there consensus that we're not gonna allow freestanding?
But not a freestanding sign out in the yard.
I'm okay with freestanding signs.
Yep, are you?
I think for, for preschool, for hospice or something, I, they're in my neighborhood, they're in neighborhoods I go to. I don't find them obtrusive. And I, and I think for a residential area, I mean, a daycare is perfect use.
I don't think you need to have a freestanding sign for a daycare. Or a preschool.
But I mean, they can have-
You can hang a shingle on the door or the, I mean, preschools are limited in, in size in residential zones because you can't have like 25 kids there. So why do-
Except that you can't see the same shingles on the house because the stupid street trees are blocking your view of the house.
And-
As I said last time, the purpose of being in a residential zone is to live there, not to have a business.
But they're conditional uses for a residential zone.
That's different.
Commissioner Hank, you could tell you, when we had our community advisory team, this was a big topic of discussion for a long time because we were deciding if we needed to have requirements for temporary signs or permanent signs on private property. And the realtors were there, represented in our group, and we were talking about, you know, what if your house never sale, never sells and it's for sale for like six months more than that? I mean, to pick a number and say this is temporary or not.
Most people don't have listings that long.
We've seen some of the last few years.
And I hope that they don't. But, so, so we did sort of go through this with the cat and then determined that rather than pick a number of what temporary or not is, we sort of stuck with what our current code is, which is you get a wall sign or a freestanding sign and then a couple of ancillary signs.
Yeah.
I think you gotta use common sense in the application of this, but I agree totally with Denise, what Denise is saying because you can have commercial creep into a residential zone. Over a couple of years, all of a sudden, three or four houses from an intersection, which may be busy, all of a sudden turn into a commercial spot zone. And it's still a residential zone, but the use is, is commercial. And, and it's because of the, you get 10, 15 kids, or you get a hairstylist, or you get an attorney that hires a couple of assistants and they, they wanna, and the signage follows. So I, I, a freestanding advertising sign in a residential area, and it can happen in the middle of, of a neighborhood. It doesn't have to happen at, at an intersection, it can happen in the middle of the neighborhood. I've seen it happen. And, and, and people buy their homes for the peace and tranquility of a residential zone. They don't want commercial creep.
So let, let, let's just take, take a poll. Do we, what, what's our opinion about freestanding signs in a residential zone? Are you for?
All in favor?
In favor for-
I'm, I'm still confused, is this, you're talking about permanent or temporary?
Free or permanent?
Permanent.
Permanent.
Like an attorney-at-law for 15 years.
Permanent freestanding signs built in the front yard of the house, are you for it? Who, who agrees with having this? Okay, and, and who, who would oppose that?
So we're gonna call this one out so you guys can specifically vote on it next time.
Yeah, I mean, I, again, I think that if you're gonna have a home occupation, I have no problem with people having home occupations because people do a lot of work from home. Some people don't need to advertise, some people might want to have a little placard that says, "I do taxes" or-
eBay.
And my, my reflection was where we had left this last time, and I would be prepared to support a, a change to the language allowing temporary signs in, in, in the residential.
And how long is temporary?
Well, I, I, I would kind of agree with what Bob says, there's a point of common sense. If it's been there for five years, it's not temporary. You know, where, where's the point where you say it's not temporary? You, I think-
What is the definition of temporary?
I think you can recognize a permanent sign when you see it, if it's been built to last for more than six months, it's probably not a temporary sign.
In our HOA, in our HOA, we have something like, and with political signs 60 days before and they have to be down within 15 to 20 days after a, a political campaign. As it comes to something else, it's sales of properties, we've heard from realtors here before on this, but sometimes properties, especially during the economy, it did take some homes quite a while to, to sell. And I, maybe, but they change hands all the time. If one realtor can't, then the next realtor takes over, and maybe there's nine, 90 days to six months with the same realtor up or something, I don't know.
What is a typical?
They're selling quicker now.
Yeah, they are, but I mean, what's a typical listing period? I mean, we just had a-
It's usually 90 days.
A guy show up, throw a sign in somebody's front yard.
Usually sign a contract for 90 days.
It was there for a month, and then boom, the sign went down. And I asked the guy, I said, "Did the house sell?" And he goes, "No, they just told us to remove the sign, the house is off the market." Okay.
We'll, we'll come up with a number, I don't think we have to spend a lot of time on picking a number on a temporary sign.
Let's go to the next item.
But there'll be another one there.
Conditional uses in a residential zone, are they allowed a freestanding sign?
Okay, so maybe if, if you're done with your presentation, we can give Tom and Jonathan an opportunity.
This, this changes something now, because all of our schools are zoned residential and they're conditional uses in the residential zone. Are freestanding signs allowed on conditional uses in a residential zone?
I, I think the answer is yes on a case-by-case basis. You look and see what, you know, they have a monument sign at the schools that say, that it's a school.
Right.
You know, the churches, churches, you know, across the street.
If it's a conditional use, then, then at that point, you're looking at not just the use, but the signage as part of that conditional use.
So if-
And, and I think that would be consistent.
An assisted living facility comes in and they, and they want to have a sign?
If you have a conditional use, then the signage is part of the conditional use.
Yeah. So when I drive around the community, I know that we have several home occupations that are zoned residential that have freestanding signs for their home occupation business.
And they're not, and they're not legal. Not right now.
They are legal now.
Well, if they're legal now, then we're not gonna-
We're gonna treat them the same way.
We're not gonna make them tear it down.
Correct.
If, if that occupancy changes, then they'll, they'll have to take the sign.
I know there's a guy on Division Street that has a tree service and he's had a sign in his yard and I know that that's, there was never-
So what happens then if somebody comes in and says?
It's like, why can't he have that sign on his-
Right, if that person did, how come I can't? I mean, I know the laws have changed.
No, I'll just tell you, in zoning codes and building codes, occupancy change always triggers compliance with the current code.
That's what we'd say, that's what the city would say to them.
So if I've had a building for 25 years and it was compliant when I built it, I can continue to operate that building until I change the occupancy. Now I gotta bring it up to code.
Right. It, it's a little different though, we've treated historically different with signs when you look at a change of copy. Changing the lettering on a sign has not driven you into nonconformity.
No, no.
Is how we've traditionally approached it.
No, I'm saying different use.
Not unless they put flashing things on it, then that would drive them into conformity because we wouldn't allow that.
So if, if it used to be an attorney's office and now it's gonna be a hairstyle shop, it's a different use.
That's hard.
Which then means, how did you know that? If you didn't read the sign, which is content neutral.
You have to look at the sign.
Neighbors know everything. I mean, again-
Going from Sam Surft to Times Roman.
You know, if I, if I'm, if I'm operating, you know, I'm cutting hair and I have, you know, maybe one or two clients a day, or two, three or four clients a day, that's not like I'm operating a hair salon. But, you know, they get, start having two or three employees and more of the house.
They're not allowed to. For a home occupation business license, you're not allowed to have folks coming to work at the facility or-
That's what I thought.
Or somebody lifts their-
I guess, one last kind of question on freestanding signs, just so I know what I need to do. My father, who has a six-foot-tall carved bear with multiple changing signs that the bear's holding, "Welcome, Happy Thanksgiving," you know, whatever, is that a freestanding sign? And does he now need to remove it?
Is it an artistically carved bear?
It doesn't matter.
It's a freestanding sculpture.
I think it's a-
I can read our definition of sign.
I think it's an art.
Was it legal when it was first erected?
A sign means any sign, display, message, emblem, figure, painting, drawing, placard, poster, billboard, carving, or other thing that is designed or intended to convey a message or image and is used to inform or attract attention of the public. The term includes sign structure, display, surface, and all components or parts of a sign.
Likewise, so no more wishing people Merry Christmas on the entrance.
So I need to make sure that-
We're gonna chop the bear down.
I need to make sure that bear never moves.
Don't move the bear. Is he in the public, is the bear in the public right-of-way?
Uh, so is there any other issues?
I can hear my chainsaw going off.
I think we had a gray bear.
Well, it was a chainsaw carved bear.
So- And just real quick, a couple of other things that you'll see changes. So we have the May 12 draft, we're coming up with the next draft in a couple of weeks. There's a couple of minor edits. Things that we are changing are we're clarifying some sign types in residential zones. We are allowing banners on street light poles, so you'll see right now, there's some up, I don't know how to say this in content neutral, but it's for the farmer's market that are between the two mass on the city light poles in the right-of-way. Right now, in our sign code, we don't have an opportunity to allow signs on light poles in the right-of-way, so we will soon. And also, we added a line that no compensation could be added for public murals. And-
What do you mean by that?
Um, so we are trying to find opportunities to discourage advertisement for public murals, but we, we have to be content neutral. So one of the standards that a lot of jurisdictions use is on the application, they'll make people sign something that says, "No compensation was given or received for the mural." So it's just one more thing added.
Like, somebody's paying them to put up a mural? I'm not sure.
Yeah, so say I, um-
Well, the mural committee paid the, they got together, got money, and they paid the artists to do the mural in a day project.
But as a property owner, I didn't financially benefit from the mural in my building.
No, no.
Essentially, you know, usually you're renting your space to advertise.
No, they, I think they all, when the, the mural stuff that I gave you was all, people volunteered their space. It was not for any-
So it would be perfect.
So no mural of the planning commission?
No, no mural of the planning committee.
So these are, there's really not that many changes from our last code. The other one is that we changed the time that A-frame signs are allowed to be up in residential properties. Before, we had no long, no more than 12 hours a day, now we have specific times so we can drive by at 10:01 and say, that's not allowed.
That's how we did eight to eight was-
So now it says maximum of 12 hours per day in non-residential zone properties. And the draft code that you haven't seen yet says 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
And I thought we talked about eight to eight.
That's what I thought you said.
Eight to eight, eight to eight sounds better?
Yeah.
All right.
What about those businesses that are staying open till 9:00 and 10:00 downtown?
Well, most of the-
It's non-residential, play.
And then-
It says non-residential, that's downtown.
The last one is that we were talking about how many times a sign can change per day. Right now, we have a policy that says it can only change once a day. It sounds like from the, some of the meetings this summer, we wanted to change that to three times a day. So if you're standing there looking at it, it won't be constantly changing, it can only do-
The school can put three different announcements up about baseball and-
Perfect, get those people going to work, coming home from work.
What, what, are we looking at the reader board type ones?
Yeah, so this is-
Everything, yeah, mhm.
And then we are prohibiting the ones that are inside people's buildings that start flashing and doing the Macarena?
Flashing, rotating, or revolving signs are prohibited in our sign code.
Both exterior and interior?
We have had, in my recog- recollection, one time since I've been here, that someone had a spotlight and we received complaints and it went through public works as a nuisance to drivers. It wasn't really in our sign code.
We're not proposing to change what it currently is, we're regulating the signs that are outside of a building.
Well, there's one in particular.
If a sign is, if a sign is in a building, unless it's a safety hazard, it'll, it can move, flash, blink.
Well, there's one on Malala Avenue that is really distracting to, when you're going down the hill and it's doing all of this stuff and-
Unless it's a safety hazard, it could stay.
It's awful.
Record it as a safety hazard.
Okay, I'll report it as a safety hazard, it's just-
So going back to that, before you go off that, that screen, I don't think anybody here owns a, a shop in a non-residential area, but most of those shops downtown don't open at 8:00 AM, they open at 9:00 or 10:00 or 11:00. And if it goes from 8:00 to 8:00, that's kind of limiting to people who open later in the day because there's not that much foot traffic downtown. We've, we've kind of responded to multiple, you guys let us know what you'd like. I think the 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM makes a lot more sense. Get it out before you open your store and then-
Are they open till 10:00 PM except for the bars?
I don't think the bars, well, some bars would keep it up, but no, but-
Are you, are you open till 10:00 PM?
Like, let's say this last weekend, I was so busy until 8:30, 9 o'clock, so I left it out because I didn't have time to, to get it in. But it just seems that's very limiting to 8:00 to 8:00.
Do you want to extend it from 8:00 to 10:00?
Jonathan may have a different idea of time, but I, I liked your 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with the 9:00 to 10:00, I, I don't have a problem with that.
I was just telling this week to talk to you today.
Yeah, we did.
Well, we talked about it.
Yeah.
Well, finally, 9:00 to 10:00.
Can you tell me a little bit about the rationale? I missed it when you were talking about, on the no compensation for, for murals, for public murals, what's that, what's that about?
So we have to be content neutral, but we want to allow murals. So what, it sounded like we wanted to avoid was big advertisement signs. But we can't say no advertisements. We can set standards on what it looks like and the quality of the paint and the location of the sign or whatever, but we can't say what it specifically says. So one technique that many jurisdictions have used has said that you can't be compensated for the sign on your building. So say some advertiser comes to me as a building owner and wants to put their advertisement on my building, I have to attest to something that I'm not getting any compensation for it and thus I might be slightly less likely to do an advertisement if I'm not getting compensated for it.
I read it as the artist didn't get compensation for his artwork.
Well, how do other cities handle murals? I mean, to me, again, I hate to make a code with a billion exceptions, but the farmer's market is something that's really different. It's not a storefront, it's a temporary use that comes and it goes. And I don't have any problem with them putting their signs out because I know at the end of the market, they're gone. They're not there all the time. And it seems to me that a mural depicting some historic theme in our downtown is totally appropriate to have. And I can't see, you know, a mural that would, I would hate to see this be used that, you know, Pepsi-Cola would come and make some kind of, I don't want to see that. I want to make some exemption for the fact that we can, you know-
It's all or nothing.
What does Toppanish do? They've got murals everywhere.
Well, I guess I don't understand why we can't restrict, there's no advertising allowed on a mural.[1711.87]
Then you have to be-
Well, I, I guess I would disagree with that. I, I think a mural is a mural. There is no content other than a graphic image.
Unless your graphic image is holding a Pepsi can, right?
Well, I guess my, my position would be that you're not allowed to have anything other than a, a picture or a scene or something. You're, you're not allowed to have anything that could be construed as advertising.
But it's also speech, too. I mean, if you're gonna allow murals, then you cannot base it on-
Well, I, I respectfully disagree. The definition of a mural is distinctly different than advertisement. So I would say that you can exclude any advertisement from a mural.
Except, for instance, the Hops mural, which has "HOPS!" in huge letters across the side of their building. And, but it's a historic mural. So, their advertising, it's Hops Upholstery, right there. But it's a historic mural.
I wish they were there.
They're not there anymore.
Well, I know, but that was up, and that could go up. Bush's Furniture could show, you know, they've been there since-
Moses was up.
Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of businesses that could integrate-
I think that the code has been drafted to-
I would argue that the, the way that regulation is, uh, written right now, that person is profiting from that sign.
Say again, Charles, I didn't hear.
I would argue that the, if, if the way that, uh, was written, that the, uh, property owner can't profit from that sign or be compensated, if it's advertising their business, they are-
Getting some, yeah, they are, yeah.
So, that would exclude advertisement.
Yeah.
You, you're, by having that in there, you can't have any advertisement. Because somebody's profiting from advertisement.
Yeah.
Jennifer, uh, would a mural be defined as, as an image which does not attract any commercial, uh, use of the property?
You can't go that far, but what you do have is the requirements of the mural code, which means that the city has to accept it. You have to grant an easement. There is this whole arts committee that's gonna have some-
So we can lean on that.
... review of it. But, again, those folks are gonna be bound by content. They can't judge content. It's still part of your sign code. It's still a sign, a work of art.
We're gonna break the arts policy at the next meeting.
I, I would-
So why don't you have a look at it? I mean, we've, we've tried to push it as far as we can without getting into content.
If you prohibit advertisement of any kind, that's not limiting the ability to make that into a mural.
The only murals that are allowed are depicting historic scenes.
Jennifer, is there any verbiage that you can come up with that would allow us to, uh, to encourage murals? Or to allow murals?
Well, I mean, that's the intent.
I think you should look at the draft code and-
We're all on the same page, I think.
Think time, place, and manner. Think time, place, and manner restrictions on what's going on. Again, this is a really big question for the city. Once you open up the ability to put murals, then you don't control the content anymore.
No, the city has to-
It's like signs in the right-of-way.
The city cannot base its decision on the content, even if, no matter what, down the road.
So that medical marijuana-
Well, I, I, I agree with, with Charles. I, I think that's splitting hairs and, and it, it doesn't fulfill what we're trying to accomplish. I, um-
I think it gets back to our, our initial premise, is that we want our community to reflect an image that we don't have right now. Right now, it's kind of cluttered, it's kind of mishmash. I mean, if you look at Malala Avenue and, and you're looking at aesthetics, it could, it could drive you crazy. It just doesn't work. And I, and I am very disappointed with what's been going on at the Safeway shopping centers. Every little storefront has to have their little thing out everywhere. And I wanted to go into a certain place and say, "Would you like some more signs? Because you just don't have enough right now."
I'm just concerned about this particular issue. I, I'd like to know how the city of Dallas controls theirs. Because they have-
We'll look into it.
-murals everywhere.
Well, Toppinish, Toppinish, Washington is considered to be mural city.
But, but what I'm saying is, they, they've got it under control there. I'd like to know how they're controlling it, so that there's no advertisement. They, they probably got 40 murals in the city of the Dals.
And Centralia has a lot of them, too.
There's zero advertisement.
They don't believe in First Amendment rights.
I'm just saying, if, if they've got a mechanism-
I believe that Washington's interpretation of the First Amendment rights are much different than Oregon's.
Dallas is still Oregon.
Well, I understand when you're talking about Washington, and maybe they have been challenged, yeah. We'll look into it. We'll bring back the policy that we've written.
I think we're all together on this, that our intent is not to allow that to be a loophole to get more advertisement. It's, it's intended to be artwork, not advertising.
That's the game that they played in Portland. Several really beautiful murals came down because they put four little corner murals to say, "This is our boundary of our, of our art space." And then they turned into 95-foot-tall basketball players advertising Nike instead of cranes and-
Charles, I got just one more comment. Denise? Can you hear me?
She could, but she's not listening.
I'm sorry, I'm talking to Denise. Go to the-
Denise?
Sir?
For the last three and a half years, we are, two and a half years, we've been debating the Blue Heron site and the image that it, we want that to portray. And we've been very serious and conscientious about that. And the image that comes through to me is historical. Now, are we going to be wrestling over the historical image that that, the site's going to, uh, project? Hopefully, it's gonna project a historical site. And, uh-
I, I think that's one of the, the images that we want to project. You know, it's, it's history is, you know, obviously very industrial, but it also has a residential history. It was the town. It was houses, barns, shops, saloons, churches. Everything was there. So it, so, you know, that portion of downtown is very, very unique. I mean, I would, in my mind's eye, would like to see something that's, that complements the downtown, what they're doing, so that you have some sort of a continuous stream of consciousness as you're walking through there, that it projects that particular image.
I understand, and I, I, I agree with what you're saying, but what we're talking about now, are we going to stifle that kind of an image?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think, I heard us all say at the last few meetings, that we have an opportunity to give our community a certain feel and look, to change the perception. You know, it's, it's when I drive through Lake Oswego and I look at their signing, it's got a certain, I don't know what the word I want to use is, but it, it projects a certain image. You don't see lots of banners and flippy men and flags, and you don't see that.
You see a lot of sidewalk, sidewalk art.
Yes.
Are we gonna stifle murals in that area?
Well, no, I, I, I don't hear her saying that.
No, I'm, I'm not suggesting that she is. But what I'm trying to-
I don't think, I don't think so. I think there's a lot of room for creativity in this.
Yeah, and that's what I'm hoping that we- I think we're all on the same page with this. The question is, how do we get there? Well, the, what I'm suggesting is, I'd like to know how other cities have controlled that, because in my opinion, if you allow artwork, but you restrict it to not allowing any, uh, message, there's no message in it. So it can't be political, it can't be advertising. It has to be just a scene.
The eye has a beholder.
Well, I mean, you can have, um, images with no words.
Yeah. Yeah, so I hope we get it.
And no product, uh, advertising.
Aren't we carrying this conversation up?
Product, right.
We, we have worked with a lot of other jurisdictions in Oregon and outside Oregon as well, too, um, in regards to mural standards. So we'll make sure that we forward all that background information to you as well.
So, are, are, are we through this? I, I promised Tom and Jonathan that they'd have an opportunity to weigh in.
They fell asleep.
Thank you very much.
They're still here.
I just don't want to see our ci, I don't want to see the neighborhood that I live in cluttered up with freestanding signs all over the place for every Tom, Dick, and Harry.
I, I think we got that. So, Jonathan, you were first. Why don't you come on up?
He was definitely the most agitated.
You called him a name.
You guys are giving me heartburn.
Sorry, your time's up.
You're too young to have, you're too young to have heartburn.
No, actually, generally speaking, I'm very much supportive of the discussion that you guys have had. Uh, but, I'm just gonna use this clicker to go back and remind me of a couple of comments I had.
That's our-
Did I go too far?
Yeah.
Um, overstreet banners, something to think about. Downtown is looking at wanting, looking at putting an overstreet banner downtown. I understand that currently, the code limits to two specific locations. Um, I'm not sure if I bring that up with you guys. We're up with the city commission, but just some thought, that is, we're moving towards this idea of civic center of Oregon City, uh, downtown being the civic center. Um, and, and if we all aspire to be McMinnville, um, there's precedent for-
We don't want to be McMinnville.
I know we're not aspiring to be McMinnville specifically, but we're aspiring for small-town charm, and I think McMinnville has, has small-town charm figured out, at least in their downtown. The, uh-
Before you move on, why do we need to have a banner downtown?
As a civic-
Well, why don't you, why would you want to have one?
Because if we are the civic center where civic events occur, then the messaging of where the, that those civic events are happening is appropriate over the place upon which they would happen.
Antique show.
Antique fair, first city celebration, those kinds of things. It says that it's a vibrant community, that things are happening down there.
Right now, you never see those unless you're up on vital stories downtown.
Downtown, because of the tightness of the street right-of-way, it's gonna be visual clutter. We have beautiful architecture downtown.
The overstreet banner in Silverton is, um, visual clutter?
Same thing in Westland on Leamah Drive, they have the signs. Westland has, on West, on the-
It's on the primary, it was just kind of a side comment, but anyways. The A-frames, I know you guys, I'm, I'm just gonna speak up in favor of, I'm feeling like Tom was on the, on the wavelength of businesses, and everyone else is on the wavelength of property owners, that essentially, in Tom's case, with the code as proposed, um, I don't know if it'd be first come, first served, but your property owner would then have to, um, sign off and say, "Tom, you can have the A-frame. Now ECP can't, now the crime place can't, now the upstairs people can't, and now, and now, um, uh, any other A-frame in front of your business wouldn't be allowed." Just, it's, it's limiting, um, other, in terms of it's not equal. And that's my biggest, my biggest concern about the proposal is that, and, and also because we're regulating wall signage based upon storefront, yet we're moving to a property dimension for A-frame regulation, so-
Because it's in the public right-of-way.
That's what we're talking about.
That's the difference.
It's different.
But it's not blocking the streets.
Right, so maybe what I would suggest, and, and with, and this goes along with the comment about no stripes in the street, and it goes along with the comment about street furniture, um, that is either city-owned or non-city-owned, that maybe you can solve the A-frame question through some sort of form-based code on saying, "You can place it here, but you can't place it there." And, uh, you would end up naturally limiting how many A-frames could be out there just given the, the physical constraints in front of that particular business or location.
I gotta push back just a little bit, because if we're gonna get into very subjective placement of A-frame signs, we're gonna be in constant disagreements.
Well, and then you get into-
I mean, we need, we need something that's measurable or numerical to just avoid-
I'm not saying unlimited.
You're talking about an A-frame spot, that's where it goes. Could get that level of specificity, which would be-
I mean, one per business or one per entrance, one per 50 feet, um, you would still be limiting the number of A-frames instead, like, like, right now, our biggest problems are the corners. You're getting ready to block out all the corners. All of a sudden, a lot of the A-frames just went away. So-
That's a good thing.
It's public right-of-way.
I understand, but, but the, the goal is to limit clutter, but also allow the business the opportunity to share the message in an appropriate fashion for the district that they're in.
You want Main Street to thrive.
Yes.
And they need it, need A-frames to do that.
To let people know you're there. Some people, you can't use the-
Don't you have signing?
You're not allowed to put anything on the, of the black-
Why don't you have a blade sign under the awning that says, "Ghoul Gallery"?
You think when people are driving by or walking by, it'll hit their head, they won't see it?
They'll see it when they're walking by.
But, so, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, my biggest, my biggest concern about the way, about property dimension as the measurement, is that it's just not consistent with the number of businesses that are there, and that the properties are varying dimensions. Uh, so in the downtown district, it's a different type of measure than maybe if you're on a Safeway Shopping Center or something like that, that considerations might be different.
Aren't you guys working on a program where people will start lighting up their windows at night? So when people are going by, they'll be able to see kind of what's going on to make it more- is your business lit up at night?
Uh-huh.
When you drive by?
All the pumpkins are lit.
We do have a, a micro grant program that we have started.
Awesome, that will go a long way.
But you don't, don't see the store name unless you have to sign up.
Just, just, my, my downtown hat off, putting my just, my resident, kind of curious hat on with the whole occupation thing in terms of the temporary measure. Maybe it's not a duration of time, but you say that maybe the sign has to come down for a day in a given year, and so, it all structures, so if somebody poured a concrete foundation, there, there are a lot of hurt to have to take that thing out, um, every year. If they wanted to have something that was constructed permanently, um-
Then no, no concrete construction.
Maybe. I think that was it.
It's a 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, you agree with both of us?
The 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM seems fine to me. The, the only, the only businesses it's gonna impact are gonna be bars, uh, and at that time of night, um-
They can't read the sign anyway.
Well, maybe at 2:00 AM, you can't read the sign, but-
Isn't, aren't the bars gonna be a destination? You're not gonna be stumbling down the street looking for your favorite bar?
They're serving breakfast, so they need to be open at 8:00.
That's right, that's right.
I would support eight to 10:00, actually.
That one picture you had where the sign, where the community development is, it has multiple tenants on it, why can't, you know, on a, on an intersection or a wall where there's people that are someplace else? Like I said, you get one sign, and everybody gets, and you say, "I'm this way, I'm this way," like the one down in Pioneer Square that says, "Go this way to Moscow and that way."
You have to be standing there looking at it to read all that.
Exactly.
Fortunately, um, we've budgeted, um, an amount of money to, uh, construct a kiosk-type wayfinding sign, uh, on the corner of Seventh and Main. Who knows how and what- Where else would you put it, except in the public right-of-way?
I was making a right-of-way joke.
Okay.
Under the bridge.
There you go.
Thank you, Jonathan.
No, Tom, Tom gets his turn now. I, I just want to share a little bit that I learned over the years in my career. I spent 26 years dealing with signage, corporate identity, and the likes. I dealt with many major international companies, their consultants, people such as Landor and Associates, who design new designs for those kinds of businesses. One of the things I was able to learn by picking people's brains, a sign, if it is a good sign, will benefit your business. A sign, if it is not a good sign, or even if it is a mediocre sign, will harm your business. And a negative sign-
Amen.
Says something about your business. A sign that is relatively neutral says you don't really give a rip. So that's not a positive thing for your business. When I look at pictures, and I hope I can get to it-
We talked about that, didn't we, Charles?
Oh, yeah, yeah. That one there is where I wanted to be.
You know, that's a lot of-
This side, this picture on the left shows, oh, a little bit about that. Blade signs on the buildings indicate to me as a potential-
Yeah, turn, yeah, turn that back.
Sabotage.
I was trying to make it bigger and it's-
As a potential customer, that I intend to be in business for a while. The sign on the sidewalk, I have my doubts whether I want to shop there or not, because if I have a problem with whatever I bought there and come back to return it, I have some question in my mind as to whether or not that business is still going to be in business 30 days from now. We have before us an opportunity to educate our merchants. I cannot expect our merchants to have the same levels of expertise that a Hilton Hotel Corporation, or a Federal Express, or a UPS, or any major company, Nestle Company, 3M Company, Ford, they have staffs of people who deal with their projection to the customer, just in terms of the company's identification. Not even the advertising and marketing departments, but staffs of people who control letterhead, business cards. What, what the logo, how's the logo used? Is anyone violating our logo? What color is our logo? What, what does that color that we've chosen exude? What, what's, what's the emotional portion that's- Yeah, it's all about their company image. It's the image. And these kinds of things destroy your image. And we need to educate our merchants. You know, you mentioned someone, and I, it bothers me, too, the shoe store. They're not helping their image with what they're doing. As far as placement, I don't care where they're placed, but I do see examples. Seventh and Main is a very good one. You have La Famiglia, who has several flower pots right adjacent to their building. There's furniture and so forth out by the curb. There's a pole on the corner.
Oh, you mean Mi Familia.
A utility pole, MIF maybe.
Me familiar, yeah.
There's a utility pole. If I were in a wheelchair trying to negotiate through that particular, what would that be? The northwest corner of Seventh and Main, it's a challenge. And we're, by defining precisely where they have to have these things, to me, doesn't make any sense. Put it where it's going to leave the space available for people to, to navigate.
Well, I, I think that's one of the points Tony was making is that we need to maintain the accessible path on the sidewalk and through the public way.
I understand that with respect to signs, but if we, if we don't have the control over the entire environment, then we've lost. If we still allow flower boxes next to the building where everything else is along the curb, it doesn't achieve what we need to achieve down there.
Well, if they're encroaching into that space, then those things are probably not appropriately placed.
The beautification of their business. They see it as a, as a positive thing.
This is kind of what I was alluding to in that maybe you can regulate the sign to a certain extent with the sign code, but if there was some sort of follow-up opportunity to maybe say, we'll dial in on the placement of street furniture and those kinds of things, that then the A-frame falls into that additional constraint as well. So that, that's what I was meaning. So like if, and, and if you're saying we want to place the A-frames or any other sort of street furniture or merchandise out towards the sidewalk, towards the front of the space, then maybe we need to instruct the parking department to paint stripes on the street so that we can know where the spaces are.
Agreed on that because I see two cars taking up a space for three.
Or somebody parks in the middle, just...
Yep, and you can't park around them.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with everything that you've said, Tom, because I will tell you in my career, and Bob may, may agree with me on this, is that the sign for a lot of businesses is the last thing they think about. Particularly if it's a small business. Oh, I got to do something and they slap something together, which, when every expert will tell you, it is the first thing that you need to think about after you've decided you're going to have a business. Because it says, as you've said, everything about you. And that's what I love about the blade signs. They're not only visible to a pedestrian, but they're visible to a driver.
Location, a blade sign is going to help your location.
They're, they're attractive if you have an awning. I mean, again, I don't...
If you have an awning, you can't put a blade sign there.
You can put it above the awning.
You can put it underneath.
That's not allowed.
But, you know, some people don't want to have any writing on their awning, so why can't they hang a blade sign underneath it? So when you're walking...
You said at 10 feet, it's got to be above your heads.
You can see it.
At some point, property, property owners need to be responsible for the design of their building and the choices that they make.
I agree, and we can't regulate everything.
We cannot regulate everything, folks. We're setting the minimum standard that we as a community want to see.
But again, it gets back to that image, that attractiveness about what it says.
Well, and we talked about this a while back. One, one of the things that we can't regulate is elimination of tacky, tacky signs. And unfortunately, we see a...
I thought we were going to be the tacky police.
Well, you know, exactly what Denise was saying is that, that the sign usually gets produced after the owner's already spent all of his money on his building and his, his build-out.
And his business cards.
And, and he doesn't have any money left for the sign. And unfortunately, I, I, I think there's a misconception in the business world...
More, more is not better.
That just, just slapping a sign out there is going to be magically bringing my business in. I think you're exactly right, that the quality of the image of that sign has a lot to do with how desirable it makes me to go into that business.
It's also true in the residential business situation in that signs typically do not draw customers to businesses and residentialism.
Of course they don't.
That's done through Yellow Page advertising, that's done through personal contact. Trade kinds of things. Most, most at-home businesses are not generated through signs on the front.
I would totally agree with that.
Yeah, I would say in, in the majority of cases, the only thing the sign lets you know is that's the location, where the business is. And that conveys, like you say, the image of what kind of a business it is. Okay, so at this point, we're not taking any action tonight. We're just, we're, we're going to be waiting until October 27th and, and...
Yes.
You'll form, make a formal presentation.
We just wanted to hear any outstanding comments, anything we need to address before that version that's going to come October 27th so we could, uh, look at maybe adoption.
So, so hopefully we'll be in, in complete agreement.
And once November, what is the election day is November the 4th? There will be no more signs in my yard.
There's so many issues that we started with. We've done a good job about narrowing down a handful of issues.
The first Tuesday.
Thank you for...
And I do, I put out a neighborhood sign once a month that says the neighborhood meeting is going to happen and then I take it down.
Thank you, Laura.
For the neighborhood meeting.
So, anything else before we adjourn?
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, gentlemen.
City Commissioner, uh, the city commissioner will be holding their first hearing in Malala Falls on Wednesday.
Yep.
Metro, the Metro Council will be holding their hearing that they usually hold. They hold, they're holding in Oregon City on Thursday.
What hearing?
There are regular meetings that they hold up at the Metro Council chamber.
Oh, I thought you said they were holding a hearing on Blue Heron.
No, just their general meeting.
Oh, their general meeting.
So it's going to be in the chamber at 5:00 o'clock down here, talking about Blue Heron.
It's going to be here?
Yes.
And when's that?
The Newell Creek Canyon and, um, the county's work with, um, uh, film permits. So they're just trying to, they try to have it in different parts of the region.
And what day will that be?
On Thursday.
Thursday?
Yeah.
Those places get...
Oh, this Thursday?